Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chatham Select Board Meeting of April 4th, 2023. Let the record show the meeting started promptly at 5:30 PM pursuant to Governor Healy's March 29th, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 until March 31st, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as is possible. That being said, I changed Governor Healy an elongated date, and I was hoping that we'd cease and desist in reading that, but that's not going to happen. So anyway, first item of business is to establish a quorum of the Select Board. Mr. Metters?
Present.
Mr. Shell?
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Mr. De Castro?
Present.
And the Chair, Mr. Dykens, is present as well. Next item of business is to approve and adopt the meetings of minute, uh, March 21st and March 28th. Motion for the minutes of March 21st, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Metters, in a second. Edits, comments, suggestions? I know that Mr. Shell was diligent in his nits and corrections beforehand, which is very helpful. Anything? Okay, let's take a vote. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. De Castro?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye as well. Motion for March 28th, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Edit, suggestions, comments. My goodness gracious, hell has frozen up. Now, okay, here we go. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. De Castro?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye as well. Public announcements and agenda item requests. Anybody here at present or from the Select Board have a public announcement and/or agenda item request? Mr. De Castro has his hand up.
Mr. Chairman, um, this being the beginning of the spring season of the year, and people are making plans for their watering needs, um, and given the rains that we've had, I know we're going to have a, an update on the pumping and water situation from the Director of Public Works, but I, I would like to request an agenda item, and I'm hoping you could put it on as early as next week, that the Board consider lifting all water restrictions for the current season.
Okay, Mr. De Castro, thank you. That's timely. Um, certainly look forward to hearing what the report is this evening. Any other agenda item requests this evening from the Select Board? Any from the public that are here, uh, tonight? Anybody online? We have a hand up? Uh, Robert Dunkinson, I believe? Dr. Bob?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just wanted to remind the public that the, uh, online sticker sales for beach transfer station combination and recycling stickers went live as of Friday evening, and so that is now available for folks to order their resident stickers. Uh, but just be reminded that those stickers will not be mailed out until, uh, mid-May. So you can order them online, you can pay for them. They will be stuffed into an envelope, but those envelopes will not be mailed out to folks until mid-May. Uh, keep in mind that your current stickers are valid until June 30th. Uh, shellfish licenses are also available through the form that was included, um, in folks' tax bills. You can, um, fill that out, mail it back in, and we will mail a shellfish license back to you. And North Beach ORV stickers for starting, uh, July 1st, uh, will be available probably in about a week or so. We're just waiting to get those stickers, um, brought over from the town of Orleans and to get the updated application form put up on the website. So that was all I had, just a reminder for the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. Uh, any, any other announcements? I did avail myself of the, uh, online sticker application, uh, this weekend. It worked very well. So, thank you. Good timing. Anything else? Any, any other public announcements and/or agenda item requests, either those folks here that are present and/or online? I see and hear none. I see and hear none. Okay, on to our first item of business, which is our drinking, water testing, and pumping update by our new Director of Public Works, uh, Mr. Robert Failey. Bob, nice to see you again. Welcome.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Select Board members. Um, just an update. All of our wells, with the exception of five and eight and 10 and 11, are currently online. I know we talked previously about taking well four offline, um, but it's testing fine, and it's a high producer, so we decided to keep it working, especially with some of the routine maintenance that we've had on wells one, two, and three, and with the ongoing hydrant flushing that we're doing. So update on the projects. Wells five and eight, the training field wells, system will remain offline until demand increases this spring. Um, then we'll bring well five back online at some point. Uh, the permanent facility, the hundred percent design drawings have been submitted to Mass DEP. We are preparing the SRF construction loan application, and we're planning on submitting that this month. And, um, and what good news is, we don't need an environmental impact report, so, uh, moving forward with that. Yeah, so, uh, on wells 10 and 11, I think you saw in your packets, there are some good pictures. The contractors installed the steel roof trusses. Work continues on the roof and the gable ends, and they're going to leave the staging in place, so the brick veneer will start, uh, working on that very shortly. That's it for the projects. As far as the pumping of the wells, March well pumping is very close to last year's well pumping for March. Uh, it ended the month at 131,000 gallons over March of '22, which is only a 0.7% increase. Uh, the wells are pumping five to seven hours per day. This is up from two and a half, two to five hours, sorry, previously, just because, again, the, the flushing activities of the hydrants, uh, we have got to increase demand. Um, and that's it. I'm open for any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Bob. Yeah, in consideration of a likely agenda item next week, we want to, you know, do a deep dive here and get some insight as, uh, as to how you think we're doing in terms of water levels and, and going forward, um, if we're going to lift the, the, the restrictions. Anyway, um, sounds good. I have a stupid question. Wells 10 and 11 are both in that building?
Well, yeah, yes, they are, in that location.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, looks like it's coming along nicely. Any questions? Um, Mr. Shell?
It just, I, I just want to reiterate, I'm, I'm actually hearing, uh, a little bit on the subject of water restrictions, so I would emphasize your point that, uh, be good next week if we get a, a, a pretty comprehensive view of that.
Mr. De Castro?
Yeah, just apropos of that, I, the Water and Sewer Committee is meeting next Monday, and, uh, perhaps they might include that in there. I know Dr. Dunkinson is, is on the call, and Rob, both staff that, so they could perhaps include that in their agenda for Monday. If they want, then they comment on Tuesday.
Absolutely. I know, um, you know, compared to last two Marches, we are better. Uh, the groundwater is higher than it has been, but it's not as good as it was back in 2020. So, um, you know, not sure if we're out of the woods yet, but, uh, Mother Nature will help determine that.
Well, I think we should discuss it next week.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we should. My, my foolish proxy is the pond at Seaside Links. I haven't played yet, but I drove by the other day, and it's, it's the highest it's been in a couple of years, so that's, that's a pretty good proxy. It's not, not as high as it's, it's been in the past, but it's pretty high.
It's all the golf balls that picks the water.
Oh, yours, Corey. Anyway, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing, parking restrictions on the Coward Lane. This is a hearing that's, we, I think we've continued twice perhaps, and so hopefully we can put it to bed this evening, um, with all due consideration. Uh, Mr. Shell?
Uh, I think, do I?
Oh, you just continue?
I don't have anything to read. I think we're continuing.
Okay.
Public hearing, so you don't need to read it.
Okay, so we have considered the reconfiguration of parking and access at the Coward now twice. Sean, if you have everything else, anything else to add? We have a, a proposal here from all the committees who've gotten together and submitted a proposal. Perhaps, Sean, you can just summarize it briefly, and then we can start a discussion.
Sure. The, um, the, the consensus from the committees is accept for the Shellfish Advisory Committee to support the recommendations. Uh, the Shellfish Department is in favor, but not the Advisory Committee. So that's generally the summary.
Okay. And, and the, the committees that have weighed in thus far?
Uh, Police and Fire Departments, Coastal Resources Department, Health and Environment, Waterways Advisory Committee, and Traffic Safety Committee.
And there's a memo that Ted Keon's also copied on. So the thrust of the, the consensus thus far is no parking on the north side of Coward for, uh, for, for the first 25 feet north, and then the south side of Coward, um, during when, and then limited parking. I should start with limited parking, June 1st to September 15th. Chatham residents, property owners, mooring permit holders displaying proper stickers only. And that was, that's on the south side, in the north side, except for the first 25 feet to the first, to the first driveway. And I'm messing this all up, aren't I? So, the recommendation is the north side of the Coward should be posted as no parking from Old Harbor Road to the driveway for number 19, which is about a third of the way down the road. Parking would be allowed on the north side from the driveway there, from 19 to the end of the parking area towards the, towards the water. For the first 25 feet on the south side, there's no parking. Should be posted as no parking to allow for safe access and egress from the Coward. And that's in accordance with town, uh, with the town traffic rules and orders. And then the south side of the Coward is, it should be posted as restricted from parking from June 1st to September 15th for Chatham residents, property owners, and mooring permit holders and shellfish permit holders displaying the proper stickers or permits. So we have a good visual of, of what's been least agreed to by the folks that submitted this unified recommendation. The only question I had on, on the shellfish permits, are they, are the shellfish permits, whether you're a, a non-resident or a resident, or if, or in a mooring, I mean, the mooring permit holder, if you're a resident or a non-resident, it doesn't matter, as long as you have a mooring in, on Lydia's Cove area, you're allowed to park there. Okay, that's really the only question I had on the recommendations. Um, now that I've masticated that pretty well, Mr. Metters, and then if you have any questions, you, obviously, it's a public hearing, you're more than welcome to ask them, just don't ask me, okay? Mr. Metters and Mr. Shell?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you know, I mean, since the last time we discussed this, there's no really new information that's been brought forward. Um, I think it is time to close this public hearing officially. Um, we can make a determination tonight. I think what is in front of us is relatively reasonable. Um, but just remember, this stuff is not set in stone. We can review this at any time. I do think it would be, this is my, strictly my opinion, it'd be beneficial for this location to have a recap maybe in the fall, you know, September, October, see how, you know, whatever decision this board makes tonight, revisit a kind of a update in the fall, see how it went, see if there were any issues, along with the quote, master review of all the landings and, and stuff that we, we plan to be doing anyways. So, um, I don't want to drag out a public hearing process for this location. I think we should make a decision tonight. I can support what is in front of us as for recommendations, and, um, you know, keep a good eye on it. So those are my, my, my general thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Metters. Mr. Shell?
Yeah, I agree with all of that. Um, I think we're done. Uh, the only question I had, uh, was, and I was reading Lieutenant Goddard's email of last Thursday, I guess, um, which identified the Shellfish Advisory Committee's dissent as being the letter attached. That letter was a February 21 letter. The recommendation piece was roughly, well, it was dated as of April 4th today, and I just wondered how, was that communicated, or are we just assuming they haven't changed their mind?
There has been no further submissions from the.
So we just, we're just assuming they haven't changed their mind? Okay, okay. That's, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Ms. Davis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, Corey, that was a great suggestion to revisit this and, and look at it, and that makes me feel a little, um, better about, um, voting in favor of this. However, I do want to reiterate that, you know, there's similar stories all over the coastline about public landings and the difficulty for the public to access them for one reason or another. And as we look at, you know, everything needing to have a permit or a sticker, you know, I, I have to think about the general public and, and think about what that access means. I think we're, we're looking at a bigger problem for this community, as other communities, Nantucket has been addressing it, Plymouth's been addressing it, and we were, and I, I believe, you know, in light of, um, you know, in light of, of the, the recommendations from the Waterways Committee and the Shellfish Constable, and the dating of the, of the, um, last vote by Shellfish Advisory, I'll, I'll support it. But I really think that we need to be taking a deeper dive into our public landings, uh, not just for parking, but for access overall. And, um, you know, I'd, I'd really like to see us, um, um, look at other opportunities the town may have to access the water, um, whether it's old landings that have been, you know, gone, gone, gone away, or, you know, maybe there's conservation land, so there's passive, uh, you know, access to it by walking, um, anything like that. The, uh, public has a right to a public landing.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Uh, Mr. De Castro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, well, I agree with what's been said largely by everyone else. Um, I think it is time to close this public hearing and to take a vote tonight. We have a unified recommendation. I understand that the Shellfish Committee, on a split vote, um, declined to support this recommendation. Their general thrust is that there should be public access, um, to our landings. Um, and apropos, apropos to what, uh, Ms. Davis was, was just saying, this board did vote to create a special committee, uh, but that, the action on that implementation, that has been deferred, um, upon the representation from the Chair of the Waterways Committee, that his committee was going to be looking at this. I know they have already started to look at this, but we've never really deliberated that. Um, we can certainly leave it to the Waterways Committee to continue to do what they're doing and to come back to us with a report. Um, and I certainly would, would welcome that. Um, as far as the actual recommendation of the Traffic Safety Committee, which has been working on this, along with Lieutenant Goddard, um, what's happening, what's being recommended on the, um, on the, uh, south side, the first 25 feet, that's consistent with, with what's already mandated in our traffic regulations. And, um, it seems to me this is a, a very agreeable solution, and, uh, certainly, as Mr. Metter said, we can, we can continue to take a look at these things, period, these situations periodically. We can take a look at this in the fall. We, the, the Chair can put it on the agenda for review if that's, if that's, uh, what, what we want to do. So I'm, I'm going to move that we, unless there are others that in the audience who wish to speak, uh, I would offer, I do offer a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Shell, did you have a comment?
I just wanted, we had, I, I see Mr. Litchfield in, in the room. I, we, we had I, one or two, uh, uh, members of the public that weighed in on this before, and I, I just wanted to know if, if, if they're, they're, uh, with the, uh, satisfied with the resolution here.
And I have one online as well, so.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Dunkinson. Dr. Bob, please.
Yeah, I was just going to comment that the Waterways Advisory Committee is looking at all the town landings, um, revise, working to update the 2011 Town Landings Report within greater emphasis this time around on the parking issue and access.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Bob. And, you know, I'm in sympathy. Uh, I'm extremely sensitive to the public's being able to access our public landings, as Ms. Davis has just articulated. Uh, I do think this is a, a, a good recommendation. I'm going to support it. It's unified, um, between the Waterways and Coastal Resources and our Shellfish Ward, and so I'm certainly going to support it, and I think I will support the closing of the, of the, uh, of the public hearing as well. And I look forward to Mr. Hosmer's leadership in the Waterways Committee to, to take a good, hard look at all the rest of the public landings we have here in town. We have to preserve access by our public to our public landings. Uh, it's critical. We have a beautiful town, and our public and our citizens, and our, our taxpayers should be able to access the water via the public, via the public ways. So certainly support their efforts and look forward to their reporting out. So we have a motion in a second, and any other comment from anybody here presently and/or online? Okay, with that, we'll turn to the Board and we'll take a vote. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. De Castro?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye as well, and I thank you very much, public, for your patience on this issue. We had to.
Chairman?
Yes, yes, sir.
I move that we accept the recommendation of the Traffic Safety Committee?
In a second.
For the unified, unified recommendation.
In a second.
Second.
Comment? Can, can we amend the motion for a review in the fall?
Review in the fall?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Metters, with that amended motion, thank you.
With the amended motion, aye.
Yep. Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
And Mr. De Castro?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye as well. Thank you, Mr. De Castro. Thank you, folks. Thanks for your patience on this one. Okay. Next item, we have a public hearing, a new seasonal all-alcoholic beverage, beverages liquor license. Chatham Sunrise LLC, doing business as Chatham Sunrise Cafe, 483 Orleans Road, North Chatham. Um, Mr. Shell, I believe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Notices hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 4, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the large meeting room of the Town Office Annex, 261 George Ryder Road, to consider a request for a new seasonal all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license for Chatham Sunrise LLC, doing business as Chatham Sunrise Cafe. Lorenzo W. James, Manager, 483 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Massachusetts 02650. All interested parties are encouraged to participate. Signed, the Select Board. Thank you very much, Mr. Shell. Uh, off to the gentleman at the podium. Please identify yourself.
Yes, David Lawler. I'm the attorney for Chatham Sunrise LLC. I practice out of Barnstable. I do love coming to Chatham. By the way, you have the most comfortable chairs of the 15th towns on the, on the Cape Cod, by the way.
And, you know, we pride ourselves on that, Mr. Lawler.
You should, you should, you should. Um, I have the pleasure of representing Lorenzo James, uh, you put your hand up, and, um, and his partner, Kenesha Henry. Um, they operate, uh, it's been in business now, uh, since August, uh, without a liquor license. It's, um, you know, at Chatham Sunrise Cafe. Uh, prior to that, it was, for a short time, Cooper on the Cape. Unfortunately, that business started right before COVID. It only was open for a few months and went out of business, but I think most people would know it as the Lazy Lobster and that location. And, um, it's, you know, a restaurant that's been in operation and business, you know, prior at that location, you know, I believe without incident, though I didn't check the records, I, but I've never heard anything. I did go online quickly. Um, and, um, is now, uh, being operated by, um, Kenesha Lorenzo and, and James, who's also there and works in the restaurant on a regular basis. The business, um, uh, opened in August, uh, in that it's a seasonal business. They closed their doors in November. It seemed that they had a great, um, uh, welcoming from the town of Chatham, and they're very encouraged going forward, uh, for the 2023 season. Um, everybody involved is TIPS-trained. Um, everybody involved is serve-safe. Now, Lorenzo is, has been in, he's a 60-years-old gentleman who's been in business his entire life. He has been in the restaurant business in the past. Uh, he hasn't had a, you know, managed a liquor license before. I've gone over with him, you know, you know, you have to understand the, you know, the, uh, you know, the liquor laws and liquor, and, and make sure you serve. I've gone over with them ad nauseam the issues associated with carding people and underage drinking, and also the clues of what, uh, that, what they learned at TIPS training, you know, having, I, I do a lot of liquor licenses and, and, you know, violations and ABCC work over the years, and really know what the issues are that mainly, you know, affect businesses. Um, uh, Kenesha has, uh, even though she's not the manager, um, bless you, by the way, um, has, um, been in the restaurant business in Barnstable at the Black Cat and the Dockside, uh, for, uh, you know, six to eight years. Lorenzo is slowing down on the, uh, trucking business and, you know, and coming in to open up the, uh, the cafe. They're hoping to open the cafe in April. They understand that if they're lucky night, tonight, lucky enough tonight to get approved, uh, by this board, that they can't serve alcohol or do anything within the application. I can, you know, um, until such time that they are approved by ABCC and then otherwise inspected, um, by the appropriate authorities, and then actually pay for and get the license. But, um, the hope is that, you know, if, if we're approved tonight, you know, that, you know, knowing the ABC, uh, see if we're lucky, you know, maybe, maybe, you know, sometime in early May, uh, be up and running to, um, serve alcohol. Uh, I'm here to answer any questions or any concerns that the Board may have, uh, in, in this regard.
Thank you, Mr. Lawler. I just have one quick question for Shauna. The prior, uh, business had a seasonal liquor license?
Yes, Cooper on the Cape and Lazy Lobster both did, yes.
Thank you, Shauna. Questions for Mr. Lawler. Mr. De Castro?
Thank you. Actually, my question is to Shauna, but thank you for the presentation. I'm fully supportive of this. I just had an administrative question, um, on the application. Shauna, um, Mr. James is, the box that asks for whether he's a director or a manager is not checked. Does that have to be checked? Maybe you can address these with Mr. Lawler afterward.
Yes, that can be corrected.
And, uh, uh, do we need 100% US citizenship?
Just the manager of record, not the ownership.
And that, the law on that is, it, I've got up to ABC on that issue, so I can. And the law on that is, I've got up to ABC on that issue, so again, 50% sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
And that's the, and that's what we have here.
Thank you very much. No, I'm fine with this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. De Castro. Ms. Davis?
I'm going to move approval of this.
Super, okay.
Second.
Alrighty, any further questions? Anybody else in the public would like to speak? This is a public hearing. I often forget that. Okay, I see no hands raised. All right, then we'll turn to the board and we'll take a vote. We'll start with Ms. De Castro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Mr. Metz.
Aye.
And the Chair says aye as well. We wish you well, Lorenzo and Kenesha and company. Have fun. Go get them.
Thank you. On behalf of my clients, thank you. And I hope everybody can come down for lunch or dinner.
Super. Thank you, Mr. Lawler. Good to see you. Okay. The next item on our agenda this evening is a kind of a lengthy list of business agenda items. The most noteworthy of which is we're going to discuss parking solutions, working group recommendations, and the public will be allowed to comment during that discussion. So we have a consideration of a request for the use of town property from the Homeless Prevention Council's Walk for All the Walks for Home. Consider a request for the use of town property sales, Dream Day 5K Race. Consider a request for the use of town roads, National POW MIA Recognition Day Motorcycle Ride that aforementioned Parking Solutions Working Group Recommendations. Eldridge Garage Project Update. We have an Eldridge Garage Parking Service Contract for the 2023 season, potential fee changes. And then we have the consideration of a ratification of a successor collective bargaining agreement between the town of Chatham and the Chatham Municipal Employees Association. So if there are any comments from the public that would like to address any of those issues prior to our diving in, please raise your hand and/or make it known. We have, Elaine, it looks like you have a hand raised. Elaine Gibbs, online.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My comments are on the Eldridge Garage update. I read the packet update, and it doesn't seem much has changed since last year. And I was just wondering if, depending on the scope of the conversation, what the status is, when they're going to break around and when it's going to be finished. It's not a big project. So I would just like to know how that's moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, hopefully we'll find out. Thank you. Anybody else out there in virtual land and/or here? I see no one or, okay. So on to our business agenda then. First up is a consideration of a request for the use of town property for the Homeless Prevention Council's Walk for Home on Sunday, June 10, 2023, at 10 a.m. And for these items, I'll probably, I'll turf almost everything to Shauna. Shauna, what have we here?
I'm just looking to see if a representative is online.
Okay.
Yes, I'm online with the Homeless Prevention Council.
Please, Margaret, welcome. Why don't you give us a little update on what you're up to here?
Great. For the last five years, the Homeless Prevention Council has had a Walk for Home, supporting our organization. We help those who struggle to afford to live on Cape Cod, to help them so that they can stay in their homes, provide rent, other inputs, so that they are happy and sustained and remain part of our valuable workforce. So we've got a walk. We've held it in Provincetown for the last five years. But last year, there was a volunteer effort at St. Christopher's to informally walk. And it was such a successful community-building endeavor. They want to make it part, sort of permanent of the, our Walk for Home. So now we would love to say that it's both, the walk is both in Provincetown and in Chatham and then for others online who want to be there in spirit.
Okay, super. Any issues, this has been, is this an ongoing request? You did this last year informally?
That was totally informally, yes. And now we'd like to, yeah.
Super, excellent, okay. Any questions, comments, a motion, please? Or questions, comments. Mr. Shell.
If there are no questions, I will move to approve the use of town roads and town properties, sidewalks for the Walk for Home to be held on Saturday, June 10, 2023, at 10 a.m.
Super.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. And a vote. Mr. Metz.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And Mr. De Castro.
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. Thank you very much, Margaret. Good stuff. Thank you.
Great news. Thank you so much. Take care.
You too. The next item on our agenda is the consideration of a request for the use of town property or sales on town property. Dream Day 5K Race and After Event to be held on May 13, 2023, at 10 a.m. And we have, I believe, a couple of young gentlemen here that are going to present to us this evening. One of whom, I believe, is Maximus Weinberg. Hi, Maximus, welcome. Please identify.
I ask that everyone forgives me a little under the weather at the moment. So if I sound gross or disgusting, apologies. So Maximus Weinberg, Colin Moore, we're both seniors over at Monomoy Regional High School. As, excuse me, as part of our internship program, we're both going to school for business. And we were looking for something a little bit more dynamic and that would prepare us better for the real world. So we are running our own fundraising event benefiting Dream Day on Cape Cod. Here we go, all right. We're not good with technology, sorry. Yeah. So a little bit about Dream Day before we get into this. Dream Day is a local charity in Brewster. It's essentially a summer camp for children with chronic and terminal illnesses where they can really just be a kid. They don't have to worry about going in and out of the hospital, doctors, nurses, all of that. They just get, it's a summer camp, completely provided for them. Whole family gets to go. It's about, it's 64 kids over eight weeks, so it balances out to about eight kids a week. And they took a hit during COVID. I mean, everyone took a hit during COVID, so it was a little difficult. So we're hoping to raise some funds for them. We plan to hold a 5K race followed by an after event. The 5K will be held on the same route as the Turkey Trot from this past fall. We then plan to hold our after event on the backfield of the community center, which will house food trucks. Right now, Mom and Pops is confirmed as well as Let the Good Times Roll Ice Cream Truck. We plan to park them on the, we plan to park them on Depot Road behind Veterans Field. We've already spoken with Parks and Rec about this as well, as well as the Fire Department, Police Departments, as well as the Health Departments. So then. Funding-wise, we have raised in sponsorship donations $3,950 to not only fund this event, but raise money for this good cause. And another thousand in donations that be gift cards, products, from other small businesses in Chatham and Harwich. And that's independent of what we're already going to be trying to raise within the school. We're planning to send every student home with a fundraising challenge of $25 because it's a good target market. So hopefully that will add to our bounty here. So as I already said, we've spoken to both the Fire and Police Departments, talked to them about necessary security, et cetera. We've already spoken to the School Committee about this, Parks and Rec. We plan to co-host the after event with the Red Nun, having something a little bit more adult for, you know, more mature runners, as this is an event for all ages, at the Red Nun from 10 to 2. We've also secured a sponsorship from Cape Cod Five and, as I said, the food trucks. And we'd love to have your support.
Okay, well, thank you, Maximus and Colin, is it?
Yes.
Colin Moore and Maximus Weinberg. Well, what a great presentation, exciting. Certainly going to be supportive. You've done your homework and a very professional presentation. So I'll turf it off to the board. Ms. Davis.
So just a couple of questions, Colin and Max. So how many volunteers do you have for your event?
As of right now, there's 15 of us.
15?
And what's the expectation, again, of attendees? All 15 members are asked that they reach out to businesses and secure not only sponsorships, but donations as well, to try to raise much money.
Okay, so the runners signing up for this, how many?
Yes, so it's a $25 charge entrance fee to get into the race. Yeah, so additionally, for another $20, you'll get a free t-shirt included with that. I mean, it's not free, paying $20, but, you know, a little incentive there. So that's $25 for the race, add another 20 for the t-shirts. After that, it should, the after event is completely free. Mom and Pops and Let the Good Times Roll, they will charge independently. Their prices are their prices.
You're not answering my question.
I apologize.
That's okay, that's okay. You're very, it's all about the dollars, right? And that's good. My question, if I wasn't clear enough, and I apologize if I wasn't, how many people do you expect to attend?
Okay, okay, sorry.
We anticipate anywhere from 200 to 400 runners.
Okay, thank you very much.
Apologies.
No worries.
Mr. Shell.
So kind of a related question, how are you going to advertise this?
So we plan to set, pending your approval, we already have a website set up. It's not launched, but with the click of a button, it will be, where people can sign up online to participate. We will also be promoting it through our social media platforms, which not set up right now, but click of a button will be after this.
Which platforms?
Instagram, Twitter, and probably Facebook as well.
Okay. So I want to say I think this is great. I commend you guys for what you're doing, all your friends that are helping you. I think it's a great thing for young folks like yourselves to be doing. I'm thrilled with it, but I can't let you go without one comment, just a little instructional comment. Call it PC if you like, but your letter is addressed to the Board of Selectment. And we are the Select Board these days. No problem, no problem. Thanks very much for what you're doing.
Okay, questions? Mr. Metz.
I'm not going to ask any questions. These guys have been doing the rounds here before the Park and Rec the other couple of weeks ago. So I'm very familiar with the project they're putting forward. I know these guys, you know, wish you all the best of luck. Actually, random question. Do you guys ever figure out a solution for the timer, you know, getting the timing? Nope, still working on that?
We're still working on that.
All right, fair enough.
There's a couple kinks that you guys have kind of been the magnum opus so far for us, so. The most official meeting we've actually had where we actually have to present. So we've been all hands on deck for this.
You'll pull it together.
Thank you.
Rachel.
Okay, I think that was a motion, Corey, was it?
I move to approve.
I'm going to second it.
Okay, great. We'll take a vote. Mr. Metz.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. De Castro.
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. Good luck, have fun, raise a lot of money.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good energy. Okay. Next up, we consider the consideration of a request for the use of the town roads for the National POW MIA Recognition Day Motorcycle Ride on September 19, 2023, Old Queen Anne Road and George Ryder Road. I think it's, the ride's a little longer than that, but anyway, is there somebody here from the? Please, sir, please.
Good afternoon, all.
Yeah, welcome.
So my name is Ken, and I belong in to the Norwood Rotary, who is sponsoring this event. I also am the Director of Operations for a business in Norwood that's also sponsoring this. So the thought process was, we have so many military members coming back with so many mental illnesses. And the 15th being the National POW Remembrance Day. We figured we'd do the ride, call it Storm of Beach, kind of, you know, little Normandy thing going there. And we have a great partner, which is 22 Mohawks that are local to Norwood. They've done a ride in the Cape last year. They're going to do another one this year. So we have a lot of the logistics down. And it's pretty neat. It's going to be on Saturday, September 16th, it's going to start in Norwood. We're going to go down to Sandwich, have lunch, and then we're going to come here to the VFW for dinner. We have some tentative hurdles to come over. We have some fireworks that want to be displayed that cause a lot of issues because the airport's right there. So we can get that approved through the Fire Department. We'd be asking for that, but that's not a deal breaker. We are sponsoring a carnival in the summer in Norwood. They're going to bring down a couple of rides for the kids, make it a family function event. We have about 300 to 500 motorcycles that have signed up already. The Red Knights, which is the Fire Department. The Blue Knights, which is the Police Department. Obviously, the VFW Riders and American Legion, Sons of the American, excuse me, Sons of the American Legion, they're all on board, and a bunch of different motorcycle affiliated clubs and sponsors. So if I can figure out how to change this. You'll have to forgive me, I'm technically, oh, there we go. Thank you. So we're going to start in Norwood about 7:30 in the morning. Wheels up by 10, hit a sandwich, wheels up by 1 in Sandwich. And then we hope to be down here by 3:00 and continue at about 10:00 p.m. at the VFW. There'll be food and drinks. We're going to limit the alcohol to only inside the actual VFW hall. There won't be any other external vendors. This is, like I said, a family event. We're either going to have food trucks, or the American Legion will supply the food. It's a lot of people, and they're not sure that they can handle it at this point. So we might supplement their efforts with the food. Again, 22 Mohawks is, they do a lot of work with transitioning military members from active duty to civilian. By way of, they pay for the training of support animals, dogs especially. It's very expensive to train a dog, but they do a lot of good work. And they also do a lot of suicide prevention. I think this will be the fourth big event that they've done this year. And everybody can look at them on the website. And then we have another slide there, I think. Yep. So this is a little bit about the 22 Mohawks. For here, what they do, very, very good program. And, you know, we're glad to be partnering with them. There's another slide there, I think, right? So this is kind of what's going to happen in Chatham. Closing ceremonies. You know, we're going to have retired military come out and say something. We'd like, you know, town representatives be there. And then we have a POW MIA. It's called the Service Table Hats or the Hat Table Ceremony. It's very somber. One representative for Beach Branson Military will come out with a cover in their hand. The table's set up in such a way that there is a rose, a candle, an empty plate, and a bottle of salt, and they all have different meanings. There'll be the Book of Prayer, you know, probably the Bible, something like that, on the table. And then dinner, games, rides, music and dancing. And then if so allowed, if we can get the fireworks, we'd like to do that as well. Won't be big, just a little small, you know, just a little, you know, little small event for there. And I think that's the, yep, there we go. We will have drone footage of the ride, and we are looking to come down 6A or 6, depending, come through. I know 22 Mohawks have had a great response with their last ride with a full police escort. And again, we have advertising along the route. We have a first aid station commitment from a company called the Acumen. We'll be donating all the porta-potties so that we're not overflowing the VFW. Local ambulance service will ask, you know, if they need any emergency transport, that they can do that. And then it'll be covered on their social media with us, other sponsors that we have, 22 Mohawks, the Norwood Rotary, which will also then trickle down to all the other rotaries in the area. And we're just asking for your approval.
Okay, Ken, thank you for that. Now, have you done this type of ride prior? You said they've sponsored four events this year, but are they all motorcycle rides like this?
No, there's a skydiving event coming up, so if anybody wants to. No, um, there's a skydiving event coming up, so if anybody wants to, two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar donation.
We will, I think, I can guarantee we'll take a pass on that one, Ken.
So there's a skydiving event, um, this is their second annual motorcycle ride.
Okay.
For here, this is our first annual that we're sponsoring with them, and they have a couple other stuff. Not a hundred percent certain on there.
Well, I'm, I'm totally committed to your, you know, your sponsoring and your, your partnering with, with the folks you're partnering with. It's very important. So anyway, I'm not so sure about the fireworks, that's another, that's another deal, but, uh, it's a lot of motorcycles too, so it's a lot of, a lot of noise and a lot of people, but it sounds like a lot of fun too, so.
Yeah, it's gonna be fun, and it's in a day, um, a lot of them, uh, that have already ridden, they're looking to maybe, uh, stay local for the night. Nobody wants to fire up and leave at ten o'clock at night, you know?
Right, right.
And we'll be conscious of that, if we have to break it back to, you know, eight-thirty, nine o'clock. You know, it's kind of open, um, as far as what the end time is. You know, we don't wanna disturb the residents of your town.
Thank you, Ken, I have other questions, but I'm gonna open it up to the, to the, to the board here. Mr. Metters, and then we'll go down the line.
No, I, I have no problem with supporting this. I think, you know, theoretically, I think, I think this board will be supportive, and you'll get permission from our end. I would just hope that, um, or I request that we are clear that the other logistical issues that you have listed here, that we kinda help communicate with you, Board of Health, for food permits or anything like, anything else that is needed, that we, um, we do everything we can to communicate with your needs, to figure out that all, everything's buttoned up in the manner that you're shooting for. So, um, just, you know, if the, if fireworks do come out, there's obviously a process.
Yes.
Food trucks, there's a process, but
Yep, correct.
From our end tonight, I, I, I'm supportive of this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Metters, uh, Mr. Castro, does his hand up, and then we'll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you for the presentation, uh, I, 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 I'm with Mr. Metters. I will be supportive of this, but I did wanna ask, have you, uh, communicated yet with, uh, the police chief of Chatham, or will you be doing that?
A lieutenant contacted me, I believe it was, a lieutenant contacted me, um, a few days ago, but that Mohawks has, um, a lot of connections already with all the towns coming through, because they did this last year in one ride. So they've been handling most of that, but I believe that they haven't encountered any resistance with any of the police forces they're all.
Yeah, well, whoever, I, I think they need to, to, to touch base with the police department, as well as they're gonna be talking with the fire department, relative to fireworks. I mean, the only concern I would have, and you, you just, uh, uh, identified, the departure in the evening of, of many motorcycles, um, as late as ten o'clock, so that's something, uh, hopefully can, can be mitigated, but thank you very much, I'm, I'm okay with this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castro, Ms. Davis, and Mr. Shell.
I don't have any questions, but I'm gonna, I'll move to approve the use of town roads for the Norwood Rotary Ride in honor of honoring National POW MIA Recognition Day on Saturday, September nineteenth?
Sixteen.
Sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
So I'll, I'll second it, I, I did have a, a, well, I had the question, um, that, uh, Mr. Castro did about the police. I mean, three hundred motorcycles coming into town may need some traffic management, which I'm sure you'll be on top of. But, uh, so that was one. The other thing is, i- i- you know, if folks are staying overnight, I would just encourage you to, uh, make arrangements, uh, early and, and, uh, because that, that's also a lot of people, uh, uh, to, to take care of.
We wanted to make sure it was approved, and then, um, we have a full team that's gonna reach out, uh, you know, this week to the local hotels and Airbnbs and stuff like that.
Well, I'm, I'm supportive of the cause, um, I, I'd, I'd love to go along, but I think that's probably beyond my, uh, capabilities at this point, um, so I, I second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shell, I'm very supportive as well, so we'll put it to a vote here. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well.
Thank you.
Good luck, Ken, you know, nine's better than ten, Ken.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Okay, that's a lot of motorcycles, motor running out of town at ten o'clock at night, okay. All righty then, next, we have the Parking Solutions Working Group Recommendations, and public comments will be accepted. And to tee that up, we have our Director of Community Development, Katie Donovan, who masterfully chaired this, this working group, of which I was a member along with Mr. Castro. So Katie, off to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and if I could just ask Channel Eighteen to, um, have my screen show up on the big screen, that would be great, thank you. So just give me a moment. Okay, so thank you very much again, my name is Katie Donovan, I'm the Director of Community Development, here to present to you the recommendations of the Parking Solutions Working Group. The Parking Solutions Working Group was created by Town Manager Jill Goldsmith in January twenty-two at the direction of the Select Board, and follow up to your calendar year twenty-twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-twenty-three goal to research and make recommendations on parking solutions for the downtown area, including Shore Road, Chatham Bar's Ave, Seaview Street, and related areas, and examine supported, uh, excuse me, and examine a town-supported shuttle service for the Fish Pier Loop, as well as paid parking. So I'd just like to identify the members of the Parking Solutions Working Group, um, from the Select Board. We had Jeff Dykens and Dean Castro. From the Traffic Safety Committee, we had Joan Craig, the Summer Residents Advisory Committee Representative, was Mike Waters. From the Chamber and Merchants Association, we had Mary Kavanaugh, Amy Tagliaferry, and Gary Thutlander. Our Downtown Resident, um, Representative was DeeDee Holt. Uh, Lydia's Cove Committee was Doug Feeney, and again, I was the staff liaison, uh, for the commu-, uh, for the committee, for the working group, I should say. And I'd also just like to mention, um, that Dick Hunter was a member of this working group before his passing. So, before I get too far into, um, the recommendations, I just wanna give a little bit of background. So the Parking Solutions Working Group began meeting in February of twenty-twenty-two, and they held nineteen regular meetings. They had a one hybrid forum on paid parking, and they had a shuttle sub-working group, uh, that held a meeting with the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority on what a potential shuttle might look like in town. If you'll recall back in June of twenty-twenty-two, the Parking Solutions Working Group brought an initial recommendation to the Select Board. And that recommendation was specific to Chatham Bar's Ave, and, um, to look at issues regarding parking along Chatham Bar's Ave, and, um, and to recommend potentially a study. At that meeting, the Select Board actually requested that we do a larger, um, study of the traffic circulation and parking issues of the entire downtown area, including, um, Barcliff Ave, Chatham Bar's Ave, uh, Shore Road around the Fish Pier, as well as Main Street. And, um, so at that recommendation or request, the staff reached out to the Cape Cod Commission. We had a conversation with Steve Tupper, who was the Deputy Director of the Cape Cod Commission. Mr. Tupper actually came and met with the Parking Solutions Working Group and identified, um, uh, talked about, uh, different, uh, studies that they've done in other communities, and identified a couple of options for the town to seek funding for a, uh, traffic circulation and parking study. So based on, um, those, that recommendation from Mr. Tupper, staff worked with the Parking Solutions Working Group to identify questions that they thought were, uh, important to be answered during, um, through this parking, parking study. And those questions, uh, were, um, identified here on the screen. But basically, it was to how to alleviate parking congestion on Chatham Bar's Ave and Shore Road, and to mitigate traffic congestion resulting from badly parked cars and trucks along Main Street. Are, are there any additional areas on Main Street where no parking zones could or should be designated? And what are the pros and cons of making Chatham Bar's Ave, um, one-way all year versus seasonal? Also, are there opportunities to mitigate traffic congestion from delivery trucks on Main Street between the roundabout and Shore Road? Are alternative routes feasible, or specified delivery times enforceable? Were there pros and cons of time-limited parking along Main Street? And then what is the current utilization rate for all municipal town-owned parking locations? And some of the best management practices for utilizing remote lots, I, I eat the Eldridge Garage Lot or the Community Center? And then finally, just to examine a relationship between paid parking and commerce, and whether or not the, there is, um, any studies that show whether or not paid parking actually helps businesses, or whether or not it hurts them. And so, um, staff, again, uh, working with the Cape Cod Commission, they have, the Cape Cod has, Commission has actually recommended this, uh, traffic circulation and parking study through the Unified Planning Working Group. The working group, I'm, I'm sorry, working program. The Cape Cod Commission, again, they recommended the project. Each year, the Cape Cod Joint Transportation Committee and the Cape Cod Metropolitan Planning Organization meet publicly to review the development of the UPWP. The process for the development of the UPWP for the upcoming federal fiscal year began in January. Project selections take place in March, and the draft document is released, released in April for public comment. The draft documents are finalized and voted on by the NPO in May, and I'm pleased to say that this, um, project has been recommended, um, for that. So data collection would begin in summer twenty-twenty-three with deliverables on that parking study, uh, traffic and parking study in twenty-twenty-four. Also, at that meeting, um, in June of twenty-twenty-two, the working group had indicated that they planned to hold a parking forum to discuss, um, options for paid parking. And it was recommended that the parking forum be held at the, at the slower time of year for the businesses to be able to attend. So that forum was held on, uh, January nineteenth of this year. And those, the items that were discussed were, uh, time limits and paid parking for the Fish Pier Upper Parking Lot, uh, potential time limits for parking along Main Street, and paid parking in the downtown, um, town-owned parking lots. And so the, again, the, um, the working group held the forum, uh, it was a hybrid forum, and they had a lot of input from businesses and residents. So given, um, the input from, from, um, from that forum, um, discussions that they had had within their working group meetings, um, research that committee members had done, the working group has come up with, uh, five recommendations, um, to the Select Board for consideration of implementation. And I think it's, it's okay, I'll just, I'll start, just go through these a little bit, one by one, with a little bit of background. So, um, initially, um, this is regarding the Fish Pier Upper Parking Lot. And so there was initial discussion about whether or not, um, time limits should be set on, for parking at the Fish Pier Upper Parking Lot, um, and whether or not paid parking, uh, should be implemented. And the Parking Solutions Working Group is actually recommending that a tiered time paid parking system be utilized in the upper parking lot. So yes to paid parking, but not necessarily limiting time, um, that people can park there. So, so perhaps, um, a, a certain fee for up to two hours, um, and then a tiered parking system for, a tiered paid parking system for, um, you know, moving on, uh, you know, beyond a, a minimum parking time. And that is to try to encourage turnover in the Fish Pier Upper Lot, Upper Parking Lot, to try to alleviate some of that congestion. Another recommendation for, um, from the group was to recommend an on-call shuttle program from the Eldridge Garage Parking Lot to the Fish Pier, and to have a sign installed at the Fish Pier informing visitors of the availability of a free shuttle from a paid parking, from the paid parking at the Eldridge Lot. Again, we thought that, um, providing information to, um, to visitors to the Fish Pier, that there was another option available, was a, would be a benefit, um, and, and perhaps that, uh, people may take advantage of the parking lot at the Eldridge Garage. In talking with the, um, the owner of Chatham Valet, they had indicated that they would be willing to, um, to provide that service with an on, for an on-call basis, uh, first come, first served. But if folks park at the Eldridge Lot, they would be happy to shuttle them to the Fish Pier, um, and then pick them up as well. The working group is recommending, um, eliminating parking on the north side of Chatham Bar's Ave, at least for the summer months, with the exception of band concert nights and other celebratory events, uh, downtown, where there may be traffic, uh, controls that would be implemented. The reason for this, um, is that, uh, resident of Chatham Bar's Ave, um, had, has attended many of the Parking Solutions Working Group meetings, and, um, voiced concerns over the congestion of the parking that takes place along Chatham Bar's Ave. And so, based on, um, the comments made and the information provided, the rec, the, the working group thought it would be beneficial to, um, to recommend that, that again, just for the summer months, um, that, or at least for the summer months, that parking on the north side of Chatham Bar's Ave, uh, not be allowed. The working group is recommending, uh, paid visitor parking in the downtown lots during the summer months. And again, that's the town-owned, um, downtown lots. Uh, there would be no parking fee for town residents and taxpayers. And again, um, as you'll see here, I did provide, uh, the motions, um, and whether or not, you know, how, how they were supported by the working group. And that motion was approved four to two, uh, the others were all unanimous. And then the final recommendation is the Cape Cod Commission's study, um, should include the use of paid parking revenue to fund a shuttle service from remote parking locations. So one of the, um, items that was realized during the conversations that we had with the CCRTA is that, you know, certainly we would want to provide, if we were providing a shuttle, uh, that we would want to encourage people to park in our outer parking lots. The shuttle would need to be free. But in order for the shuttle to be free, we need to have an, a revenue source for, um, for that shuttle. And so, um, again, it was recommended that we, you know, ask the commi-, Commission, Cape Cod Commission, to, to study that, and to see if that would be something that they feel, uh, would be utilized based on the parking counts and, and the, and what they see during the data collection this coming summer. So that is the, um, those are the recommendations. I think that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions. I think that there are some members of the Parking Solutions Working Group as well that are here. Happy to, as I said, I'm happy to answer any questions, or go over anything further if you'd like.
Yes, thank you, Katie, and I see Joanie Craig here, she was a member of the, of the group, and Mike Waters just joined us online. Welcome, Mike, and, uh, thanks for that, thanks for that summary. I'm gonna just describe some context here. This parking in Chatham is a difficult topic, um, to say the least, especially during the months of July and August, and sometimes June and September as well. And so, the, the, this group, to their credit, really tackled this very, I think, very difficult issue. Looking, started looking at the Fish Pier Upper Parking Lot, but also downtown in particular, and our downtown lots. And I've had an abiding interest, it's no, no secret to anybody in this town, that I've had an abiding interest in, in the use of a shuttle service here in town. Certainly during the months of, of July and August, knowing that we have capacity elsewhere, um, outside the downtown area, including our downtown lots, and not to use that capacity, I think, is foolish, um, especially during June and July. The group worked hard and tackled some of these very onerous issues and difficult issues, and, and, and kinda realized halfway through or so that we really needed some expert guidance, so we reached out to the Cape Cod Commission, and they will be doing the study, and I'm thrilled that, that they're gonna be doing the study, and we'll get some data. But we also thought in the near term, there were things or items that we could take action on that would really improve traffic flow and safety in the downtown area, and, and the, and the roads, uh, near there too. And we talked a lot about Barcliff Ave and our closing Barcliff Ave to parking, and how traffic was kind of squeezed from Barcliff, uh, elsewhere in town, Shore Road most notably, and also Chatham Bar's Ave, again, most notably. I, I, I have a, uh, Chatham Bar's Ave can be a very dangerous road in the summertime, July and August, especially on busy nights when we have events downtown, and there's traffic both ways, and there's parking both ways. It's very, very difficult for pedestrians to traverse Chatham Bar's Ave. So I hope we take that recommendation into serious consideration, that we, uh, don't have parking on the north side of Chatham Bar's Ave during the busy summer months, espe-, except for the nights when we have band concerts, et cetera. Fish Pier, I know, is, is controversial, or somewhat controversial. We, we felt that the, the dearth of available parking for, um, visitors and for visitors visiting our businesses down at the, down at the Fish Pier, it would be of, of interest to, to, to create some opportunity for more turnover there. We know that the fishermen have, have their spots both below and above, uh, at, at the Fish Pier, but that the, with the, with the lack of the paucity of parking there, we felt that, um, if we had parking, had paid parking there, and, and incentivize folks to pay for parking for as long as they park, pay for an hour, or two, or three, or whatever, that it would be fair to all, um, accessing really where there isn't a whole lot of parking. Paid visitor parking in the downtown lots, we had a, a, I thought, a great conversation with the Chamber, and a lot of representatives from the Chamber weighed in, uh, uh, to a fairly well, they were members of the committee. well, they were members of the committee. Mary was there, Mary Kavanaugh, and Gary Thulender. And we heard an awful lot of input from the, from the chamber and from others, but the non-main, we're not talking about paid parking on Main Street, we're talking about implementing paid parking in the downtown lots. And there wouldn't be for paid parking for our taxpayers, our local residents and our taxpayers here in town, so you get a sticker you wouldn't have to pay. But for July and August, we're leaving considerable amount of money on the table by not having paid parking. And I just analogize to other, and we interviewed other companies that provided parking services to seasonal towns like Chatham, most notably Province Town and off Cape some other famous towns as well, or, you know, and we're leaving an awful lot of money on the table. And it's money enough that would fund a shuttle ultimately that we could offer for free, if we could do, charge for paid parking downtown, we could offer a shuttle for free. The committee also felt that a free shuttle really would be a bonus for alleviating parking downtown and the outlying areas, that if we could, folks could park where there is free parking and get shuttled to the Fish Pier, to the Lighthouse, to downtown, to wherever in town, the loop, that it would really be a bonus and really alleviate the congestion, again, in July and August especially. I won't steal anybody else's thunder, but the shuttle program from Eldridge Garage, for those folks that perhaps don't want to pay hourly at the upper lot at the Fish Pier, if they could pay for a day or so, and we're gonna have a subsequent discussion of what the rates might be there or not, that that would provide incentive for folks to take the shuttle, to use Eldridge Garage Parking Lot, and take the shuttle to the Fish Pier if they so desired, or if they didn't want to park or pay for parking at the upper lot at the Fish Pier. So I thought that was an excellent compromise, if you will. And then, again, I guess those are my summary comments. This group was a free-flowing group. There were times when I couldn't attend, but they were under great direction with Katie and the input from the chamber again, and from our traffic safety with Joan, who did a great job, DeeDee Hall. Folks really weighed in, very thoughtful in their consideration of these recommendations, and they weren't made lightly. And I certainly hope the public and the select board take them the way that they were crafted, because there was an awful lot of thought that went into this effort. So Mr. Castro was a fellow select board member along with me when Peter Kokolas no longer ran, and Mr. Castro bellied up to the bar and volunteered to be a part of this, perhaps to his detriment or to his, anyway, Mr. Castro was brave enough to join us, so I'll turf it over to you, Dean, for any color that you'd like to give as well. Hopefully, I've helped the effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I was volunteered, that's it.
You were, you were voluntold, is what you were.
Yes, everything you said about the quality of the input and the dedication of the members of this group is true. I just really want to talk about the paid parking issue, because I was one of the two votes not to go forward with it. And I say that as someone that, like you, has advocated for paid parking in the downtown lots for a long time, because we are losing a lot of money, and frankly, I think visitors to this town get a good deal in the summer, a deal that they don't get from other communities, where they can park downtown for free, and frankly, displace year-round residents who want, might want to come downtown. But, and for that reason, I really am pleased that we finally had, have had an opportunity to discuss this issue very seriously, and we're now talking about it at the board level, so I think that's a good thing. What caused me to pause on this was the forum that we had. I've also, I should say, I've also heard from a couple of year-round residents who don't like the idea. I think perhaps their feeling is based on the history and the culture of the town, I'm not sure. But no one spoke in favor of paid parking at the forum. Most people either opposed it, or didn't speak to it at all, or expressed some concerns about it. I did have private conversations with Gary Thulender of the Chamber and Mary Cunningham of, I'm sorry, I think it's, they're both from the, it's Chatham, the leadership of the Chamber and the Merchants Association. And the sense I had was that the merchants, the merchant community doesn't really like the idea of paid parking in general. But if they were, if we were to have it, it should be concierge parking, which is different from what I think the sentiment on, of a majority of the committee wanted, which is some sort of a digital system, or even kiosks. But I, I think I was ultimately driven by the fact that we're gonna have this study done. And as Katie pointed out, the last directive on the study is to assess and weigh paid parking versus, and its effect on commerce. Because what you hear from the merchants is, it will hurt us economically if we charge people, people won't come to Chatham. I personally don't think that's likely to be the case, especially if it's, if the parking rates are appropriately set. But I do think we should examine that issue. I think we should get some data on it before we implement a program of paid parking. So I voted not to, not to go forward with that particular recommendation, but I do support overall the recommendations, the other recommendations of the working group. I think they make a lot of sense. I know the Chatham Bar's Avenue recommendation is probably gonna create some consternation, especially if it's enforced, which it will have to be. But we heard a lot from the police and the fire department about that, and their ability to access that street. And we considered making it one-way, we considered making Main Street one-way. And we were advised against that by our public safety people. So those are my observations about this, but I think it's a good set of recommendations. And I thank everyone who participated, including those citizens who voiced their thoughts and opinions, not just at the forum, but at the various meetings that were held by the committee. And I credit Katie for her leadership of this particular group. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you, Dean, and thank you for being voluntold, I really appreciated your input, and you took, you always said, very thoughtful. I'm gonna turf it to the select board at this point, and then I'm gonna offer members of the committee to speak as well, and then I'm gonna turf it off to the public, okay? So I'll hear from the select board themselves, and I'll go to Mr. Metters, and then right down the line.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I would like to very sincerely thank the groups for putting their time and effort into this. It's always difficult to have a topic like this put out there where you're putting yourself out to, you know, acceptance of your positions and criticism in your position. So I do appreciate the time and effort you put into this. I may not agree with everything, but it is very much appreciated that people put their time and effort into putting a project forward. I mean, clearly, question, does Chatham have adequate parking for the peak of the season? No. Will Chatham ever have adequate parking for this season? No. That's my opinion. We're not gonna create more parking, I know that we're gonna buy any larger parcels of land, we pretty much have what we have, so we gotta figure out how to manage it. Fish Pier is gonna be a delicate topic, no two ways about it. You know, I'm glad this is up for discussion, you know, we may make a recommendation, we may review it, a year from now, we may change that recommendation, who knows? We gotta, we gotta accept that some of these recommendations may be not set in stone, and that we review them, and see if they work or don't work. You know, the shuttle concept doesn't really bother me, I do, I've warmed up to it over the years. It does add a little element of convenience, traffic safety, getting people from point A to point B. So I do, I do think it has some merit in having a shuttle system in place. I think we just gotta work out some of the mechanics of that. The Chatham Bar's Ave element, I mean, this one's gonna be a tough discussion, in my opinion, because it's always the same thing, if we eliminate it from here, those cars are gonna end up somewhere, or so we're gonna push it into someone else's neighborhood, and then how do we keep chasing ourselves addressing safety? So, you know, I'm gonna, I very much appreciate input on that from the public, because then my concern is, we move here, those cars are gonna end up somewhere else. And I don't know where we're pushing the traffic concerns to. So that is one I really do pause at. Downtown parking, you know, that's been, paid parking has been a conversation for a long time. I don't agree that we should be doing it from a money perspective. There's a lot of character in town, we're a unique town, we shouldn't be doing things because other towns are doing it. We gotta do it because it's right for our community. I do have some concerns of having paid parking only in the lots, you know, because then you basically have free parking on the main strip, I think those spots are gonna start clogging up, you're definitely gonna probably have less turnover, so which I'm sure none of the merchants are gonna like. If you have less turnover on Main Street, you know, we've got, we've got a lot of visitors and residents that are going through the town during the summers. We have delivery vehicles of all kinds of sizes, UPS, FedEx, every commercial vendor, Coke, and, you know, what have you, parking wherever they really want to, to be honest with you. You've got service vehicles, so it's, it's not, you're never gonna have an ideal master plan for parking, you're, we're gonna have to work with it a little bit, as long as no major safety issues kind of trump the decisions that we have to make. I would hope that we could come up with some solutions to accept some of these. I'm very much concerned about the paid parking concept, because I do think it reflects, or changes the character of the town. So just doing it from a monetary, again, a monetary perspective doesn't sit well with me. And, you know, we, we have this problem only for a short window, and in the wintertime, you know, we're relatively manageable for the most part. But, you know, we can take a couple steps forward tonight, potentially, with some of these recommendations, but I had, do have some concerns about several of the items that I just mentioned, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Metters. Mr. Shell.
Yeah, this is hard. I think, and I'm new to this, so I take that with a grain of salt as well. I have a bunch of questions. I think my bottom line here is that I don't really feel comfortable, at least for myself, that we are ready to vote on recommendations. And I say that, I want to echo Corey's expression of thanks to the committee, you've been at it for a year, if not more. I'm sure there's been a lot of very difficult discussion, a lot of back and forth, a lot of investigation, you've enlisted the Cape Cod Commission, that's all, that's all to the good. I would echo the thought that this is, in my humble opinion, not about maximizing revenue, it's about taking that limited resource, namely parking places in and around Chatham, and figuring out how to allocate those, how to maximize their use, recognizing, again, as Corey said, it's in July and August that we don't have enough. I don't, from all of this, have a good sense of how all of this is going to work. I, at beginning with not knowing what the difference is between concierge parking and whatever the other alternative was, I have apps on my phone for a couple different cities, and you just go and you park and you click on it, and sometimes it lets you, from a remote location, increase the amount of time you spend there, and sometimes it doesn't. To me, that kind of a system coupled with shuttles all over the place, for every remote location where we can put cars, is a comprehensive approach to the problem that I, is what intuitively suggests itself to me. But I say that with complete respect for the fact that you've been at it for a year, and that may be sort of a, you know, well, this is easy type of, thanks for the suggestion. I, I, I am, I'll just ask the one question, there are 10 people on the committee, these numbers are 60, 60, 60, 42. I am interested to know, before I'm beginning to feel comfortable with this, number one, does this represent a real consensus, as good a consensus as you could possibly manufacture in the town, considering all the interests, the merchants, the, you know, residents, the summer people, the everybody who are represented, I understand. So that's, that's one of my questions. And two, to the extent that there were objections or issues or whatever expressed, I'd kind of like to get a feel for what that is, and have those been assuaged, or are they still out there in the territory? So those are, those are pretty much my comments at this stage.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Ms. Davis.
Thanks, Jeff. I, I think I'm on the same pages a little bit with Mike and with Corey. I think that the, the study examining, you know, what the findings of the study is gonna drive the process of what, what we're gonna end up with in town. I feel that, yes, we have definite issues, but my concern with Barcliff Avenue was that we're pushing parking out of Barcliff Avenue and finding, you know, another, you know, we just pushed it someplace else. And I have a feeling that that's gonna happen with CBI as well, Avenue as well. One of the things that I, I think is really important is, and the key to the whole factor, is the shuttle service. And, you know, I don't really have a problem with paid parking in the town lots, I have concerns about the Fish Pier. And I don't think if we, if we don't have a comprehensive shuttle service that's gonna support this, or a comprehensive messaging about what's available, I mean, the capacity of the people at Eldridge Garage to handle with golf carts, and I have deep concerns about that. One of the things that really interested me is the idea that the merchants have recommended a concierge service, which I'm pretty sure is just the, you know, like Passport or something like that, that's an app on your phone. And I don't understand what the other parking, paid parking solution's gonna be, if it's gonna be kiosk, is it some question, yeah, go ahead, Katie.
Sure, if I could, I believe that the reference to the concierge parking was parking similar to what Chatham Valley is doing at the Eldridge Garage Lot. The other, what the committee is recommending is either an app-based parking or a kiosk, likely app-based parking, like a Passport or another company like that.
So I could support an app-based process. I just think that there's, I think the study is the most important part of this, the recommendations, the group has worked a long time. But I honestly think that there is rationale to look at this and not do restricted parking yet, but to have, you know, have, have some time to think about what the study says. And I know that it does, you know, say that data collection will start in 2023, and then the deliverables will be 2024, maybe that's it. And we're not looking to, or are we looking to make any recommendations on restricting parking at this point, based on the, on the motion? I mean, the only one that I can see that would take action would be the Chatham Bar's Inn. I can't imagine that we can take any other actions, because we don't have that parking, parking program in place.
Okay, Ms. Davis. Mr. Castro. You've already spoken. Okay. Okay. You've already spoken.
I have.
You have. You added much color.
Thank you.
I am gonna turf it off to members of the committee if they'd like to speak. Mr. Waters is online, his hand's not raised, but Joni Craig is here, I was wondering if she wanted to say anything or not. If not, it's okay, Joni, but you are a vital member of the committee. I think it would be important if you would address Mr. Shell's question about consensus, and if you might, and I have comments there as well.
Sure. Joan Craig, member, chair of the Traffic Safety and a member of this committee, and like you, I really want to thank Katie, because she really kept us all in a format that didn't go out into the weeds, although there were many times when we did go out into the weeds, as can happen when you start fresh. Consensus was difficult because there wasn't consistency in everybody attending every meeting, because there are other factors in life. A lot of the questions you have, a lot of the committee members also had. A lot of the questions you have, a lot of the committee members also had. In, in reference to things like, uh, working with the forum, it was an eye-opener because of basically the individuals who did speak, and I would say the majority of the audience did not speak, but the individuals who did speak for the retailers and others were very much against a lot of what was presented here tonight, and some of it is understandable. One of the pieces that I came away with, having talked to other destination areas, such as Provincetown and Newburyport and other places like that. Uh, and it'll be very interesting to see, once this study is done by the commission, paid parking did not affect people coming into the town. They still came into the town and they did paid parking. And a lot of these places use a Passport type of system. And for those of you who are not aware of what the system is, it's exactly what Mr. Shell said. It's an app that is very easily loaded on your phone. You, um, put in your license number, you go to the parking space, you punch in the code and sometimes you can put in how much time you're going to be there. You have the option to extend that time if the, um, increase in the time has started to pass. And then you go home and about a month later, you get a little charge on your bill, depending on what you charge per hour. In doing this, the funding could go to shuttle. And I say shuttle as a singular, but in my estimation, and this is my own personal opinion, it would have to be to work successfully, to have the funding, to have two shuttles so that you're going and coming at the same time. So this is something that we've talked about also. We've also talked about different areas of town where we could perhaps have these satellites, such as the community center or some of the schools in the summertime. And have enough information out there so people would know as they come into town, hey, we can park all day over there free, get the shuttle and get one coming back. I think you're going to hear from other individuals in the audience about other issues that they want to address. And I know that the Fish Pier is a very, very sensitive issue because of historically what has gone on there. Again, I, I have no problem with looking at what the study comes back with. What I would suggest is to reconsider some of the thoughts that you have said about, uh, Chatham. I'm sorry, um, the Avenue.
Chatham Bars.
Chatham Bars Ave. For the summer. It isn't just the individual who lives there, but we all felt, as did your safety committee, uh, your safety directors, that it is a real hassle, similar to why, um, we presented in the par- uh, Traffic Safety Committee about Barcliff. Uh, seeing some of the pictures and all of us going down that avenue in the summertime, you hold your breath because there are so many walkers coming and going to the Fish Pier and coming back to downtown. That would be a very simple, um, way of seeing how it would go this summer if we did make that no parking on the north side. That would require obviously some signs from DPW. But in talking to, talking to or listening to our fire and, um, police chiefs, they were very much in favor of that consideration. So I, I'm not, I don't have a problem with delaying the others until the studies come. I, I would urge that you at least consider doing that and seeing how that goes, similar to what you asked about earlier, readdressing it in the fall, taking a look, talking to your safety groups and seeing how it does go, having it as, um, no parking on the north side. And that's really all I have to say. I know Mike is online, so he might have ad- additional comments. Thank you.
Joni, thank you very much. Well said. Uh, Michael, um, I'd love to call on you. I would like to call on you, even though your hand's not raised, uh, any other words of wisdom from the traffic, uh, from our parking study?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you for the opportunity. We, um, when we started this, um, we had, uh, two specific areas, uh, that we were considering. One is we were in, it was indicated that there would be a problem by closing Barcliff around the Fish Pier. So we tried to develop a plan that could be put in place this summer to relieve some pressure at the Fish Pier. And that was to limit the amount of parking, the time of parking in the upper lot. To have more of a turnover, uh, for visitors and to provide a shuttle service from, uh, the Eldridge Lot that would basically serve the Fish Pier in a way that would accommodate, to some extent, the merchants at the Fish Pier and the visitors. And that could be put in with just the sign and a negotiated contract uh, with the operator of, of, uh, the Eldridge Lot. Uh, so that would address one of the issues. The other issue we were asked to look at, I think, was a holistic view of the town and parking in general. When we decided to have a study done necessarily, um, our work is incomplete. And it's going to have to, um, await the completion of the study or, uh, not 2020. Well, uh, we'll have some of the information. We should be able to come up with something next summer. If we get the kind of results we want from the study. And, um, as was pointed out, the last item in our recommendation uh, integrates, uh, the study with paid parking. Paid parking in conjunction with a shuttle is a mechanism to add more parking spots. We have not yet, um, quantified the amount of spots that could be available at the elementary school or at the middle school. Uh, but I think it would be a hundred, two hundred, or even, um, a little more possibly. Those are additional spots that we're really getting, um, have available to us now. Paid parking in the downtown lots funds the shuttle that will utilize that and also a shuttle that will allow people to tour more of the town uh, without putting that burden on the taxpayers. Paid parking in the down lots will also be the force that drives people to go to the remote lots. Because if it's free everywhere, uh, you'll never get them to go out of town. No paid parking on the street was something that, uh, the merchants felt, uh, very strongly about. And, uh, it, and that is why, uh, it was not, uh, proposed. It was also, a lot of people felt that it would be ugly looking and make the town seem differently. And there is some validity to that. But normally you're trying to make people pay for the closest spots and drive them to the farthest spots. I think a program can be instituted now, uh, as we suggested for this summer, to take some pressure off the Fish Pier area, uh, and give people alternate, parking alternatives. Uh, and I think that can also be used to some extent, uh, for Chatham Bars Avenue, which I must emphasize, if you were to go back and look at the videos, is primarily addressed, uh, as a safety problem, uh, by people in the area and the safety professionals. And we were very much moved by that as a, an important thing for the town, uh, to do. Um, I expect that the study will give us a basis for, uh, uh, considering the implementation of paid parking at a later date. Many of us were impressed with the Passport system, which is a telephone app. And, uh, I expect that we continue, uh, to, uh, consider that. And eventually that could be a useful way, uh, to implement it even without kiosks. That will be the only thing I'd have to add. Thanks to Chance.
You bet, Michael. And thank you for your input all along the way. You always had much common sense and brought an awful lot of clarity to, to the effort. Um, I am, uh, yes.
Just a procedural question. This is a procedural question. Um, just, and I'm directed to Katie. As an example, i- if this board were to decide to, to limit the parking on Chatham Bars Ave. tonight, wouldn't that also require a formal public hearing process?
Yes.
Yes, so.
Yes, I believe, I believe the recommendation would be then to hold a public.
Hold a public hearing. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. Mr. Shell.
So ju- just a couple of thoughts. First of all, I, 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 I have a visceral reaction to solutions that reduce parking without doing anything else. I mean, I, i- if we're going to solve the, for example, as I'm hearing it, I'm sorry?
Well, what we did in Barcliff Ave. We took parking away.
Well, okay, I, a- a- and that doesn't mean that it's a good idea. Just me.
No, I, I agree.
But, um, I, 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 i- if we're going to solve individual problems, it would seem to me that, that, the, 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 uh, the Fish Pier is the first place to start. But along those lines, um, I guess I just want to ask the question. We, we, we were talking about eliminating parking on Barcl- uh, sorry, on Chatham Bars Ave. Why is that a better solution from whomever the strong recommendation came, uh, to making it one way? And leaving parking on one side of the road? Katie?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just select board member Shell. The, um, the Parking Solutions Working Group had many discussions about that, but they also had input from, again, the fire chief and the police chief. And I think their, the rec- the overall recommendation was that they would prefer to see no pa- no parking on the north side rather than making, um, Chatham Bars Ave. one way. It was discussed, um, at length. Um, it was, uh, there were concerns from a delivery standpoint, from a parking, uh, traffic circulation standpoint about making, uh, Chatham Bars Ave. one way. Even, you know, even just for the summer months, uh, there were concerns that were raised again by members of the working group as well as by, um, both, um, fire and police chiefs.
I, I understand, but what was the rationale that said one is better than the other, other than concern? I mean, it complicates deliveries. I understand that. Uh, from a safety point of view, what is the, what are the relative considerations?
Well, Mr. Nacastro has his hand raised and I think there was.
The fire chief was on, uh, I don't see it now. The chief police.
He's on.
And my understanding was that the, the fire department cannot get their vehicles up the street. If there's parking on, enforced, no, if there is parking allowed on, on the north side. And they, they, they need, um, to be able to come up that street, um, in order to, um, uh, address any emergencies downtown. I, the fire chief can do a better job explaining this than, than I can, but I, that's what I heard.
Justin has his hand raised. Justin, Chief Tivano.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I apologize, Mike. I don't want to put my camera on because I'm a little, uh, short on bandwidth from where I am. Yeah, my, my biggest concern, um, just about was more with the one, one, uh, one-way recommendation. As a matter of practice and policy throughout the summer months, um, really from, uh, about Memorial Day to Columbus Day, especially in the weekends and the shoulder months and then throughout the week during the, during July and August. Uh, we, for calls on Main Street, uh, we, we don't just come straight from the rotary down Main Street because of the traffic congestion throughout town. Uh, so access to some of the, those secondary roads, some of those cross streets that strategically place us into town, um, just maintaining access to those is critical for our response. Uh, you know, so when we get a, when we take a call, emergency call into the station, we, we look at, at the map, our dispatcher looks at the map and sees where the call is located on Main Street. Um, and if it's somewhere in the vicinity of Chatham Bars Ave., that becomes one of our primary response routes to get to that location. Now that said, I, I, just as I was with, with the Coward Landing issue, um, I am sensitive to, uh, some of the, the comments that select board member Meadows and, uh, Shell have, have made about taking a problem one place and pushing it to another. So, you know, uh, we're always going to do our best, um, to just be prepared, to be able to respond, to get to where we need to get to, um, and deal with whatever situation we face. So ultimately, whatever is decided upon, we'll come up with a plan to best access where we need to get to. With that being said, I'm, I'm always going to be, you know, in favor of something that's going to give us the best, best access that we can.
Can I, can I just a quick follow-up to that, um? Chief, um, does it make any difference in terms of your concerns, which I take seriously? Which direction, um, Chatham Bars Avenue is one way, uh, if only even for the summer? Or is that so obvious? It's got to be one way and that's the way it is?
Yeah, so I, I guess my, my, my concern was one way heading towards Shore Road because, you know, we would be coming kind of head-on into traffic. Um, and playing a game of chicken with cars that, that wouldn't really have anywhere on either side of the road to go to, to get out of our way. You know, if, if the road was one way in the other direction, uh, you know, it would, it would potentially make things easier for us. I, I still would be concerned about, you know, where those cars would be able to pull over to, um, and to allow us to get through. And as, you know, obviously the closer we get to Main Street, they're just going to run into a roadblock up there. But I know, I don't know if Chief Anderson's still on. I know he had some, uh, additional concerns from their end on, on the one-way recommendation as well. But if there's other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Chief Tivano. You have the comments from the select board or from the members of the committee. I will turf it to the public now. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, the gentleman with the hat first, please. He's, he had his hand raised first.
Thank you for letting me talk. My name is Mike Abdow. I've been at the Chatham Fish Pier for 35, 37 years. Fisherman, a long time. Opened up magic charters back 2002 as fishing went downhill and I got a little bit older. I got into the charter business. I think you missed a little bit of something here. Mr. Smith is here. Uh, my numbers might not be dead on, but we have 60, 62 parking spots and we have 67 permits that were given out to the mates. So it doesn't leave you any to charge anybody anything. Because a lot of it is taken up by the guys who are fishing, some two, three guys sometimes on some of the boats there. So, you know, that's their business. That's, you know, what they do. So I don't know how that's going to work, play out for you. My customers go four, six and eight hours. What are they, where are they going to park? I only allow one vehicle. And right now, we give them a piece of paper. If it's before 7:00 AM, that allows them to park in a parking spot up there. After that, it's open to the public. So I don't have a mate on my boat. If I did, he'd have a little sticker for the upper lot. But I don't. I do it all myself. So if you have a paid-for parking situation there, how are they going to be able to go fishing with me for four, six or, or even 10 hours? Sometimes we do a tuna trip, we're gone for 10 hours. They're going to have somebody run down and put a nickel in the meter every, every hour. So you have to think about that part. There's three or four of us that have businesses there and we have vehicles that park in the upper lot. Um, in the afternoon, I tell the people, get there early and wait to get a parking spot. But then again, my people are gone for four, five, six hours with me. So they need to be able to park there, um, without. So they need to be able to park there without wearing about a meter. And like I said, I give them a piece of paper, they put it up on the dash, and that allows them to park there early. Maybe I could do that for an afternoon shot, to give them the same piece of paper, they would put it there, and they wouldn't get charged for parking. So I think you guys have to think about that a little bit, because only so many of us can park down below. And if we have too many there, some, I've had to park up top myself and walk down. I'm almost 70 years old, and I got to walk down a hill to go to work, which is fine, I'll do it. But it's getting to the point now, it's, you know, it's at eight weeks in the summer that really is the crush. We call it the crush. Everybody's getting crushed. We all understand it. None of us are fighting this. How you can figure it out, well, that's another thing. The other thing I thought was maybe my customers would be shuttled, but they don't want to be shuttled. They don't want to be bussed in. If they were to box, I understand, but no other place buses people in for a charter. No other place, I mean, there's plenty of parking in all the other places, up in Susuitt and Rock Harbor and Sacquetucket and all that. And we're in that little ball field. So the one thing in Provincetown is, they park, is it's right there in the middle of town. And the other parking lot is the old gas, behind the old gas station, the old Chrysler thing. But that, again, that's in town. And for them to walk to the dock is a very short walk. And for the ones that are in town parking in the big parking lot at McMillan's, it's right there, so it's easy. Here is going to be a little more difficult, and I don't know what's going to happen to my business if they decide they don't want to be bussed in, or they don't want to walk half a mile to get there. I don't know where that's going to lead me in my business. And I'm the only charter boat to pay. There is one other guy right now in a small boat, but it's not like there's 25 charter boats there. There's only me. You know, the other guy who was there last year passed away, so, and none of the other commercial fishermen have thought about getting into, you know, that's what allows us to get there, is we've been fishing there all our lives. So if somebody wants to be a charter boat, they just go down and appropriate the right paperwork and the captain's license that you have to go to school for and all that, and they get the charter, because it's kind of our retirement thing. I got three or four more years, maybe I can stay healthy, and I'm done. I don't know how many other people will want to get in. But that's the only problem. There's just not a lot of parking spots up there.
We know that, Michael, and I really do appreciate your input. Ms. Davis has her hand up. I think she has a question or a comment.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, you start your day at 5:00 a.m., right?
Right.
And so, and you essentially give your customer a guest pass to say that they are part of your, you know, they're on your boat.
Well, that's what I give them now. We have a sheet of paper.
Sure.
And we just put their license plate number on it and the time. That way there, I mean, I can fill, we're leaving at 5:00, we'll be back at 9:00. And then my next charter might be 10:30 to 2:30. And I can give them another sheet, my next crew, and do the same thing. That would be, that would at least cover if you go to the paid parking thing, at least in my business. But it's, like I said, mostly only one vehicle. If they bring a second vehicle, I tell them, you park on the road, that's your problem. You know you're not supposed to go there, but they do it, I can't tell them what to do.
Okay. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, does the reality and logistics match what we're trying to do down here? And it sounds to me like charter companies, you know, may need to have some sort of accommodation like the boat permits have to sort of allow for parking. I don't know how you do that for, let's say, you know, reserved space or anything like that. I don't think there's enough space down there to even do something like that. And maybe, maybe you guys have already discussed this, but I'm just trying to figure out what, you know, as, as Mike says, he, you know, he pays, like a fishing boat does, he pays for a mooring permit, a landing permit, and I don't know what else.
I pay $2,000 to be there.
Yeah, and so this is his business. I'm just trying to figure out what we're missing here in that whole solution. Okay?
Well, I think, you know, with the dearth of parking, there's not enough spots. So somehow, we got to create capacity in this town. And one of the ways to create capacity, unfortunately, I disagree with you, Mike, I think at some point, we are going to have to shuttle folks down to the Fish Pier. We've created, we asked folks to come visit our Fish Pier. We've created a beautiful deck there. We have all sorts of interesting activities there. We have seals, we have boats unloading. It's a tourist attraction. We created it. We've created our own parking problem.
Right.
And it's not necessarily all in the upper parking lot. It was on Barcliff, it's now on Chatham Bar's, and it's also on Shore Road. So, but we've created it. So I think it's up to us to kind of help to try to solve it. And no one's trying to put anybody out of business, no one's trying to step on anybody's toes, but with the lack of the dearth of parking itself, we need, we need to create alternatives so that folks can still get to the Fish Pier and enjoy the Fish Pier, blah, 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 but without impacting negatively anybody's business. We're trying.
I totally agree. We need a shuttle for the Fish Pier. There's no doubt about it. I'm just talking about, you know, until we get to that point where we have a larger shuttle program for the town of Chatham, you know, I, just, that's where I'm at.
Couple of things Mike brought up. All the mates aren't there all the time. They're not there, all 67 are not there all the time. So there are free spots, and there are spots that turn over. And there ought to be spots that turn over with more alacrity so that the businesses can be serviced with more alacrity. So we can create more folks to be able to get to the Fish Pier, be able to get to the restaurant, be able to get in and out in an hour or two so the family can enjoy it, blah, blah, blah. So we're trying to create more capacity. I believe firmly that we've created, you know, a problem, because we did close Barcliff, and frankly, are considering closing Chatham Bar's because of safety concerns. Shore Road's a safety concern right along Shore Road. I come down there, and there's babies and carriages and walking, and it's, you've got to slow.
Oh, there's lots of people walking there.
It's a lot of action. July and August, a lot of action. So, you know, one thing on closing Chatham Bar's, we're hoping that perhaps folks will then park more in Eldridge Garage, which is underutilized. But also, Eldridge Garage parking lot is also willing to offer employers downtown, you know, chits, if you will, vouchers, if you will, for their employees to park in Eldridge Garage, because we have a problem with employees parking along Main Street and elsewhere, and in the downtown lots, that are taking up parking spots that ought to be available for visitors and residents alike. So it's not, these are not, I don't mean to proselytize here, but, you know, these are not easy, these are not easy problems. And we've grappled with them over a number of years, and I welcome the Cape Cod Commission's study on paid parking downtown and how we might craft a reasonable shuttle service and pay for a reasonable shuttle service by enacting fees downtown. But it's a global problem, and it's a global problem for July and August. And I disagree with respect to my compadre here, Mr. Metters, but I do believe there's solutions, because we have capacity in other areas of town. So we need to alleviate those areas where there's constrained capacity, Fish Pier, Shore Road, elsewhere, and get them to a shuttle base at the middle and high school, perhaps, and the community center elsewhere.
So what time, what time are you guys thinking the shuttle would start and end? You don't know?
No, we had, we had all sorts of discussion about times, early in the morning till, you know, late in the evening, you know, and we asked CCRTA, the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority, what they would craft for a shuttle service, and it got very expensive very quickly and very noisy. So we backed off on the CCRTA, and now we're thinking about a private endeavor, but paying for it out of, out of downtown parking monies, because we don't really have the bandwidth yet in our town budget.
Well, I just wanted you to keep in mind that I'm still here.
No, no, we love you guys.
And thank you for allowing me to talk.
And we, we know that the Fish Pier's a lightning rod. We know there aren't enough spots to begin with. But I just, a couple of clarifying points. All the mates don't park there all the time. There are spots available during the course of the day.
Thank you.
That could turn over and could create capacity. We had another gentleman, please, back here. Yep.
Charles Baldwin, 52 Chatham Bar's Avenue, N11 Namus Lane. And I have been here for 86 years. I live year-round now at that address. And I want to talk about Chatham Bar's Avenue, nothing else, just Chatham Bar's Avenue. From the middle of June to the middle of September, it's a zoo. The trucks that deliver to the brick block and to the impotent oyster and to the Mayflower
and to the other store to the left, they come up Chatham Bar's Avenue. They unload, and they go back down Chatham Bar's Avenue. They don't want to drive through town. The other problem is that Chatham Bar's Avenue is the only main street that intersects with town that doesn't have a sidewalk. And the other issue, to make that even worse, but just to go back to that for a minute, you've got people staying at the Chatham Bar's Inn and Hawthorne Inn, and they walk to town. They don't drive to town. They walk to town. And they're in Chatham Bar's, on Chatham Bar's Avenue, in the road, which is now a one-and-a-half lane road. Cars are parked on the north side in the road. If they squeeze, maybe they're half in the road. But along the T, where there is a fence, they're in the road. Now you've got two-way traffic, cars and trucks, and you've got pedestrians. It's an accident waiting to happen. There's another issue that the town needs to think about, and that is, the north side of Chatham Bar's Avenue is owned by the town primarily. Where most of the cars are parked is along the golf course, which is town property. The town is allowing cars to park illegally in the road, and they're the abutter. I see that as a possible issue if there is some kind of a tragedy, where the town could be sued for allowing cars to park blocking the road. So it's, it's a major issue. Two years ago or three years ago, there was no Eldridge parking. Now there is Eldridge parking. The 30 or 35 cars that are parked illegally on Chatham Bar's Avenue could certainly fit into Eldridge. Eldridge could accommodate 80 cars. So it certainly can take the cars that are on Chatham Bar's Avenue, and there'll be room for 40 more. And if someone is not that familiar with Chatham Bar's Avenue, it's too bad, because you have to realize that this is a major problem. So I hope you can separate Chatham Bar's Avenue from all of the rest, because it's a problem that needs to be solved now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
If anyone has questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you for the questions. Thank you, sir. Thank you for the input. Yes, Ms. Avalon.
Hi, my name is Paula Saint Pierre, and I'm here representing my business, The Beach Comer Boat Tours, which runs from the Fish Pier over to North Beach Island, and it has for 25 years. It's a service that actually has been running continuously for 60 years from that basic same location, first at Harding, Andrew Harding Lane, and then Claflin Landing, and then as the breaks happened, it moved over to the Fish Pier in 1987. I have tons of notes. I'm probably going to get really sidetracked here, but obviously, I'm speaking for my business, but I'm also speaking as a lifelong resident of Chatham. So over a half a century. And the thing that I'm most upset about is that I feel like this group, and I'm, you all have worked really hard on it, everybody has good intentions, but I feel like the silent, working-class majority of people in this town have no idea what is trying to be accomplished here by this paid parking. They don't even know that this is even a topic until you bring it up. Well, I don't want them to have paid parking at the Fish Pier. I hear it all the time when I ask somebody if they know about it. So this is something that most working people are just not even aware of, that this is something that is being put out there. And I guess my question is, you keep talking about leaving money on the table and controlling congestion. Well, I'm sorry to say, but Chatham has always had a congestion problem for eight weeks every single year for eternity, and will continue to have a congestion problem forever. That's just the way it is. That's why we all live here, why we love it, why we hate it, and what brings people here every single year and also encourages people to retire here, because it is a beautiful, unique seaside town. And that's, it's a love-hate relationship, and you just kind of get used to it. Some of the things that I was thinking of, and you keep talking about paid parking with these apps and meters, I have two gentlemen that work at my boatyard with me that do not have smartphones. They have flip phones. So those two guys are never going to be able to park anywhere where there's any kind of a high-technology thing. Along with my mother-in-law, Norma Avalar, who is, you know, going to be entering into her 90th year here as a lifelong resident of Chatham, does not even have a smartphone and will not be paying for any parking downtown because she can't access that technology, along with, you know, lots of other people. Not everybody's connected to smartphones. I did a little research on the amount of money that we could take in in other ways. So I have no idea what numbers have been generated by what they think they're going to make from paid parking. Obviously, I don't think they're going to make a lot at the Fish Pier, but even if we're going to include downtown, the real estate value in Chatham right now for businesses and private properties is $9.9 billion. That's a billion with a B. Okay, our tax rate is $3.388 per thousand. So in the year, this year, we generated $38 million in revenue, and last year, in the year 2022, our tax rate was $4.62 per thousand. That's a 74-cent difference. If we only increased our taxes by one dime, one slim dime, and again, we are nickel-and-dimeing people with these ideas of having paid parking, if you increase the tax rate by one dime, you would generate $991,000 a year. And if you add it on 20 cents, you'd be at $1.982 million a year. I'm sure we could fund a beautiful, not cheesy, and a working shuttle system for this town that encourages people to park in outside areas. It's not going to happen overnight. People do not want to be separated from their cars. People love their vehicles, and they like the convenience of being able to walk to their car. But it will take time to train people and to understand that we have a good working system of a shuttle service that can get people in a timely manner to and from parking lots. And yes, we need, you know, I would say we need maybe four shuttles. Do they need to be these big gaudy things? No, they don't need to be anything like that. They can be classy and very subdued. They don't have to have any advertising on them. They just need to do the job of moving people from point A to point B. And I think once people feel like it's a system that works, and they can feel confident that they've used it and it got them to their car and to their, you know, destination, fine, they'll be willing to use it again. I think people think that this Eldridge Park parking area is going to save the day. That parking lot was actually created over 40 years ago with the help of my husband when he worked for RH Pelletier. So it's actually been a parking lot for over 40 years for the town. You know, Bill and Lester Eldridge ran it. Yes, they used it a lot for taking people down to the Lighthouse, but if you wanted to pay them money, you could have parked your car there and walked into town. It's always been available for a parking lot for 40 years. So the fact that people think that they're going to be able to have this concierge call-up, you can't get around Chatham that fast. And they're scooting around with these little, you know, maybe 10-passenger go-karts. I think it's a pipe dream to think that the Eldridge Park parking area is going to be able to, you know, save the day. I am irritated that this whole group of us that came here in January I am irritated that this whole group of us that came here in January and expressed our concerns, the merchants, the Chamber of Commerce, other businesses, of why we were not in support of the paid parking. And you look at the thing that was up on the board there saying that, you know, 6-0, everybody voted in favor of it. I don't think they listened to a darn thing any of us had to say. Again, we all do things because we have good intentions, but it doesn't mean that just because we have a good intention that it actually works out in the favor that we want it to be in. Again, I, my business is similar to Mike Abdow's as far as people come to use my shuttle. I have no idea how many people in a day he has reservations. Mine does not. People show up. We take them to the beach. They may be out for two hours. They may be out for eight hours. That's totally up to them for how long they want to be on the beach. When we first started doing this 25 years ago, there were 27 camps on North Beach. A lot of those people rented those camps out, and people stayed there for the whole week. And they left their car in the parking lot up above for a week. That doesn't happen anymore because there's only two camps left out there. So that kind of finger-pointing congestion thing fortunately is not something I have to, you know, try to defend. My people are just coming for the day. And Mike also pointed out the fact that there are already permits for the upper lot. Yes, we know the fishermen are not all going to go out fishing on the same day with, you know, maximum capacity of crew members. But the fact is, those permits have already been issued, and that needs to be taken into account. And, you know, just like Jeff said, is that we did build this thing. We built this $3-million observation deck to bring people to see things in Chatham. And you can't expect people to now try to figure out how they're going to, you know, get the paid parking, or how long are they going to be there for? And maybe they want to go to Steve's to get some fried clams before they go on the beach comber, or whatever people's willy-nilly decisions are, which is what people do when they're on vacation, is just make willy-nilly decisions, and it's, and they don't have a plan for the day. Except for on the day when we have bad non-beach day, you probably have 300,000 people driving around aimlessly on Cape Cod that are not parked in a chair at the beach. You're going to have massive congestion in every place that is not the beach on a crummy day. So that is just something that you have to, you know, bite the bullet and accept that on a rainy day, you don't go to downtown Chatham. You don't even think about it. So I know I've been kind of all over the gamut here. I've been scribbling notes and just listening. But as a lifelong resident here, I don't see that making people pay for parking, whether it be at the Fish Pier or downtown Chatham, is going to change how people come to Chatham to shop and eat and love all the things that we love about Chatham. I just think that that's just nickel-and-diming, and it's not who we are. We have enough money here in Chatham. And if you want to make some more money, charge them two more dimes on their tax rate, and we'll make, you know, almost $2 million, and we can buy some beautiful shuttle vans and drive people in circles in Chatham in the summer months. And again, it's eight weeks. We all just suck it up. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Saint Pierre. Well said, and if I might for a second, Ms. Saint Pierre, just for a sec. What I heard you, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, but what I heard you say loud and clear was that you really think a shuttle program is viable and needed.
I think it's totally needed, not only to move visitors here, but I think, and the merchants understand this, is that, you know, you're trying to run businesses downtown. Your employees have to, they have to get to work, and they have to get to work at a reasonable time. You can't expect somebody who's, you know, going to be working in a clothing store or in a restaurant. I have a child that works in a restaurant. He is not going to go 45 minutes ahead of time to hopefully catch a bus to get him to work on time. This needs to be something that's like 15 minutes. And if you have a shuttle going in one direction from one lot and another direction to an outer lot, it needs to be like this, you know, not this kind of circular thing because people have to get to work on time, but you can't expect them to wait around for long periods of time for a shuttle to show up. It has to be, I have a shuttle service for my SEAL tours, and it's logistics of keeping the schedule on because if you're off, if I hold the bus for one party that's stuck at the, they're over there in front of Agway because they didn't listen to my directions and told them how to get to me on time, and they're stuck on an overcast day, and you know what? They miss the bus. They don't go on the boat because I can't hold the bus to hold up an entire tour. So I lose out because I don't get paid from that family, but that family loses out. They've been, that's what their plan was for the day, to come on a tour. And, you know, yes, I've kind of ruined their plans, but but being on time for stuff is essential in this small window of opportunity to make your living. And so I think a shuttle service, well thought out. I think going to the private sector, you're going to get more bang for your buck than looking for some sort of a government agency. And I had to, during COVID, I couldn't use my large boats, so I didn't need my big bus. So I went and I rented a 15-passenger van, one of those ones where you can walk right into it. You know, a high top, so comfortable. And, you know, that way you don't need people with special licenses to drive them. Once you get over 15 people, now you need a CDL with a passenger endorsement. And that ability to hire people, that well of people is so small. So if you were to purchase, you know, four or six of these shuttle vans that seat 15 people, you don't need a special license to operate them. And it allows people to, you know, it's not a bus. It's a van. It doesn't take up any more space than a F-250 truck downtown. So I think that it just, you need to think outside the box and maybe look for the private sector to provide insights into how they would run something like that.
Yeah, the committee landed at that very spot when we, after we talked to the CCRTA. We had discussion about private sector. We absolutely landed exactly in that spot.
Somebody said it was going to cost a half a million dollars, and I raised my hand. I'll do it.
Yeah, I know. We did the same thing at the committee, but I swear to God, Dean and I said, we'll run.
Right.
I mean, just kidding.
You know, there's a lot of retired gentlemen and ladies in town that are looking to chat up, you know. You're kind of like the Chamber of Commerce anyways. You know, I have 150 people come through my business each day, and I advise them on, you know, what beaches to go to, where to get dinner, and where to have lunch, and where to propose to your, you know, your soon-to-be-wife. Like, you are the Chamber of Commerce when you are dealing with the public here in town. And so every single time you have an interaction with them, maybe you have a shuttle service that's solely for people trying to get into town for, you know, to shop. But then you really do have to have something for the merchants to get those 100 cars out of the downtown area. So that's just my two cents.
Okay, thank you. I just have one quick follow-up. You mentioned the call feature of the Eldridge Garage doing a shuttle back and forth to the Fish Pier. I mean, that shuttle has to help the Fish Pier. It has to.
It does, but that little tiny, I don't even know how many people it seats, four, six, or eight. I mean, people come down in a minivan, and it looks like a clown car. You know what I mean? So how many people are you truly going to service? If you were to have somebody sit down there at the Fish Pier for an entire day, and we won't even pick a rainy day, and you just do a count of how many cars and the number of people getting out of those cars. How many, if that Eldridge Park parking is also taking people to the Lighthouse or down to the other end of town, or I don't know really what their route is, I think they would need an entire fleet of those little vehicles to be zipping all over the place.
Yeah, I just think nothing ventured, nothing gained. I mean, it can't hurt.
No, I hear you. I just don't, I don't think people are patient enough, to be honest with you, to wait for something to come and pick them up. So.
Thank you very much for your input. Thank you. Yes, sir. I'm blanking on your name. I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Barry Desolets.
Barry, how are you?
Good. I want to address three things. And first of all, thankless job. Great job. The first thing I want to address is the letter I read at the forum from the Chamber and the Merchants Association. And I think some of you may have taken that letter incorrectly. The letter I read spoke about the merchants being against paid parking in Chatham. It didn't speak about it's okay to have parking lots paid and not paid on Main Street. That's not what I was talking about because I think if you do that, you're going to have the same problem that my business does and Jen's does. We are at 400 Main Street, and what happens at 400 Main Street, now that it costs $15 to park at the Eldridge Garage, is these people are circling the town looking for a free spot. And one of the places they go for their free spot is 400 Main Street. And we are the parking police. And we have to fight with people who don't want to pay $15 at the Eldridge lot, but they come with their wagons and their umbrellas, and they want to stay there all day. And it's my job, Mr. Dykens, to kick them out. And it's not a, it's not a good thing. I'm a former police officer. I don't want to be fighting with people who are potentially my customers. And that's what happens. And that's the problem you're going to face. It's going to happen when you have free parking on the street and the town lots are paid because they're going to be circling. They're going to be circling. They're not going to go into the paid lot if they can find a free spot, and they're going to circle for an hour, just like they do now in Eldridge. And you wonder why Eldridge is underutilized? Because it's $15. People are circling around. They don't want to pay $15. And we have, we have a couple of problems that come with that. There are the people that circle for an hour. They find a spot. And then we have the people who circle around for an hour, and they leave. And that costs us business. That costs us business. These are serious problems. So I just want to set the record straight. I think some people took my letter wrong. It wasn't that we were in favor of paid parking in the lots and not paid on the street. We're not in favor of paid parking. Merchants, Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Yes, sir. I don't know your name, but.
Steve.
Steve. Oh, yeah. Come on up, Steve.
Steve Genoti, owner of Chatham Pier Fish Market. Paula is my new lawyer. A lot of things have been said tonight. I pretty much support Mike, Paula, everybody. I agree with that. I heard a little clip about Newbury Port, believe it or not. Chatham Pier Fish Market delivers to Newbury Port, and I'm very familiar with Newbury Port. They have a huge downtown parking. My trucks go up there. It's actually tight to find parking. Parking is a headache, as we know. Everything has been laid on the table tonight. I think everything has been said. Do, what's the benefit of the charging for parking? The one thing I could say for us at the pier, it's a singular transaction. So think of yourself. Are you going to pay to come down for a clam chowder, to pay for the parking, just to pick up a bowl or a cup of clam chowder? It really, I agree with everybody. It will be an effect of our business, you know? Maybe the trolleys are in full support, I think, and I agree with Paula. It has to be continuously. It has to be a loop. You know, people are people. They're, they want convenience. And I think the trolley could add that convenience, could help the parking. I don't have the answers, and I think everyone said everything here that could be said tonight. And I appreciate and have empathy for your headaches, but it's difficult for us too down there. We have to fight for that with the fishermen on his bike said, what is really left to charge, you know? And they're right. We have to fight for our own parking spaces, you know? You can see me. I've got five little spots, you know, and it's difficult, you know? So I appreciate everything and look for the best for Chatham.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Anybody else out there? Our harbor master, Mr. Smith, Stuart Smith.
Good evening.
Mr. Smith.
Sounds like Paula is your new bus company operator, I think. The, I just, a couple of things I just wanted to touch on because I think it's getting later. In a holistic look, I think the shuttle is a good idea. It's probably long overdue. Don't particularly like them. I think they're going to change the character of the community, but I think it's probably necessary. I do believe that Shereen is quite correct in that we really should be waiting for the study and some data to determine what it is we're going to be doing, most particularly at the Fish Pier. The closing down of Barcliffe Avenue was, I think, was somewhat short-sighted. I think it's a good time to reevaluate that decision because it's only exasperated our problems at the upper lot parking and the lower lot parking. So maybe at some point before the summer, we can take another look at that. Maybe get the people that live there to move back any plantings and fencing that they've put on the right of way. That would be helpful. That'd be helpful all over town. The, a couple of things, if you haven't been to the Fish Pier lately, it looks like an airstrike hit it. It's, there isn't a square inch that isn't dug up. Major project going on down there. The schedule is moving along. Project is moving relatively well, but we're not done. And we don't have a warfinger. So I would ask that the board not make any decisions on any changes regarding Fish Pier parking while this is taking place. We need to get done with this project. We need to get the docks open so we can have the commercial boats being able to offload. That should be our concentration. And we need a warfinger to, you know, lead the enforcement of the parking regulations down there. So those are my, those are my thoughts. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Stuart. Any questions for still this evening? Okay, I see none from the select board. I have Michael Anderson, our chief of police, online with his hand up. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman of vehicle. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to be really brief. I did catch the comments regarding Chatham Bar's Avenue. Katie will attest that I've submitted a report to the group primarily addressing a concern or request for a one-way on Main Street or a one-way on Chatham Bar's. These were in response to many requests over the years of something similar to those. We are opposed to any one-way traffic on Main Street, and the police department would be against any one-way traffic direction on Chatham Bar's. We do support 100% the prohibition of any north side of Chatham Bar's Avenue parking. I think that that would help with the two-way traffic and the pedestrian traffic tremendously. Again, I'll be brief. I just wanted to get my department on the record. I'll take any questions.
Dean, I have Becky Vocal who's had her hand up for a while, so I'm going to recognize Becky.
I just wanted to ask the chief.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'll be brief. Sorry, Becky. Chief, would you just clarify, currently, is parking legally permitted on the north side of Chatham Bar's Avenue? Because I didn't think it was.
The signage, there is, there is a gap in the signage where it's tough to enforce when there's no signage that prohibits it. There is signage that prohibits it, and we enforce that, but there is a large gap on Barcliffe where there is, in my opinion, inadequate signage.
Becky Vocal.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, chief. Becky.
Hi there. I'll be, I'll be quick, even though everybody here knows that I could go on about parking in downtown for hours. I own Mahi Gold on Main Street downtown. I was part of the working committee that was created eight years ago and spent several months on that group when it was ultimately decided at the end there not to move forward with any paid parking or time-limited parking. not to move forward with any paid parking or time limited parking. I just want to, Dean and Corey, I thought, had a lot of great things to say. I appreciate, Dean, that you heard the business community and you heard what the merchants had to say and voted no against the paid parking. I strongly agree. I, I know the working group has spent a lot of time and a lot of hours and a lot of genuine conversation trying to come up with the plan here. I am confused why any recommendation was made without a study before you're recommending to the board. I think we need to have more facts behind that. And I, I am thrilled to hear that many of the members of the board agree with that as well. In terms of CB, in terms of Chatham Bars Ave, I, I just want to say I don't think that any of the parking that's happening on that street is coming from downtown. I live in the summer above our store. My husband and I walk with our three children down Chatham Bars Ave several times a week, if not almost every day. And we can absolutely agree that what is happening there is not safe. But most of the parking happens at the other end, the shore roadside of the street. I think it's a lot of beachgoers, some employees. I'm not seeing a lot of that happening towards Main Street. So I don't think that that is Main Street shopping driven. You know, there's been a lot of sentiment said that the business community on Main Street is against paid parking strictly because we are worried that it will prevent our, prevent shoppers from coming to town. I'm not worried about that. I think people will continue to come to Chatham, no matter what you do. What I am worried about is protecting the landscape and the character of what Main Street is. We have a asset in Chatham on Main Street that we are so fortunate to have maintained over the years. And I think if you start putting up paid parking kiosks and you start monetizing your visitors, you are changing the dynamic of the community that will start to visit our town. And as someone who has grown up, you know, I can remember being five and six years old and my dad pulling over and us jumping out to run in and put our name into the squire while he went and found a spot. This has been a problem for years and it will continue to be a problem even if you monetize parking. We have a capacity. I firmly disagree that any shopper on Main Street is going to hop on a shuttle. If you are coming to downtown to shop, you are not going to drive to the elementary school, wait for a bus and come downtown. I think that is absolutely beneficial for the fish pier, but I don't think it's necessary for town. And I don't think that paid parking downtown, where a shuttle may not be successful, should be used to pay for a townwide shuttle. And I also have concern over the fact that there were only six out of 10 people voting. You know, I, I also would be interested to hear what the other four people thought before any decisions were made. But again, I appreciate that much of the board has heard what the community is preaching and is going to wait for the study to come back. I also want to echo Corey's statement that just because a study says paid parking will not hurt commerce, we also have to ask ourselves as the gatekeepers of the future of Chatham, what will it do to Chatham? Right? Not just what will it do to commerce, what will it do to Chatham? So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Becky. Thank you very much. Anybody else here, either online and/or presently, that would like to speak on this subject? Yes, please. Ms. Carroll.
Thank you. I'll keep this quick, I promise. Emma Carroll, representing Chatham Clothing Bar, Chatham Kids. Really just wanted to echo a lot of what Becky just said as well. But that I do not believe that paid parking is going to solve the big word that keeps being mentioned tonight, congestion. And I highly suggest waiting to make any recommendations or decisions until after the study is done. So thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Ooh, Mr. Shell, hand up. Who else do we have here? Maladon. Maladon, you there?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah. Speak clearly.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm on the road too.
That's better.
So I, I just wanted to thank the, the parking group. I, you know, I just wanted to put it out there for everybody in town, you know, without really bragging. But Chatham Valet is the only valet company in Cape Cod. And I think, you know, the, the community and, and the town can only benefit from that. And I, you know, like I'm adding more shuttles, the way my business is. Like I really, you know, like my business is all about weekends and weddings and throughout the Cape. Like I have, I have close to 20 employees now in the summertime. So I have, you know, something that a lot of businesses are struggling with, like a resource to people. And I can always dispatch more people to downtown if I need it, more shuttles, whatever the case is, at a, you know, at a moment notice. And just wanted to say to all the businesses in town, if you send people to park in Eldridge, there's no parking, I'm happy to shuttle everybody back to, you know, to the, you know, front door and then pick them up from there with their purchases back to their car. Same, same goes for the Chatham Fish Pier. I'm in the parking business, as I mentioned before. And, you know, I, I like to park as many cars as possible. To the gentleman from the 400, you know, Main Street, we always allow people to go there. If they're just going to shop, to a coffee shop or whatever, we don't charge them for, you know, the short time that they're there. I've given this order to my workers and I'll keep enforcing it because I don't think it's right for us to charge, you know, for parking for five minutes if somebody's going to the store across the street. And this will continue. So just wanted to put it out there that like I'm, I'm here. I, I, you know, I think I know what I'm doing when it comes to parking. I'm happy to assist. And in order to solve, you know, the town's problems, I think that valet parking is a very viable solution because we do create parking. You know, we take a lot and we can double the parking spots there. And I think that's, you know, it's not solving all the problems, but, you know, helps alleviate some of the problems. With the shuttles, as I said, I'm adding more shuttles. I do have passenger vans and exploring, you know, possibilities into transportation as well. So I have 15 passenger vans as well at my disposal. So, you know, it's, it, it does go hand in hand, parking and shuttle. And I think that's, that's the way Chatham should go.
Okay, thank you, Maladon. Thank you for the input. We also have a potential fee change discussion later on in this agenda. I, I'm going to bring it back to the board. Dean, you got a comment? Then I think I have a way forward here, so I'd like to get going. Oh, you.
There is another, there was another hand.
Actually, Mr. Shell had his hand up before you did, Dean. Go ahead, Mr. Shell.
I'm not going to unduly extend, extend this. I, I just would like to ask for a copy. Chief Anderson referred to a report on, on one-way streets that he submitted. I, I'd like to see a copy of that. So can I just request that? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Shell, Mr. Castro.
I just want to ask Katie, if you could put on the screen the elements of the study that we're going to be seeking. Put that up again. Because it's not limited to paid parking.
No, it's not, Dean. And actually, I have a, I think I have a way forward here.
Yeah. So I, I think I'm very much in favor of having this study done. And I'm very much in favor of deferring action, deferring consideration of taking action on most of the other recommendations, if not all of them, in the report, listening to people. And I think the point, I'm very impressed with what Becky said at the end about the character of the town. And others, Stuart said the same thing. Others have said it. I think when we get a report from the Cape Cod Commission with data on that last bullet, that's something we would weigh. If they say, you know, it's really not going to hurt commerce, we would weigh that against, I think, what we call the Chatham character in the, in our evaluation of capital projects. There's, that's something for us to evaluate. It's not for the Cape Cod Commission. So that's, I, I think going forward with the study is the right thing to do. One of the people I heard from was Norma Avalar, who's very much against paid parking. She's told me that a number of times. And I think she reflects the same type of thinking that Becky and others have said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. If I might, if you put those five, five items up on the board, please, Katie. And, you know, the, the committee in its prescience did recommend a Cape Cod Commission study. And perhaps we could have short, short circuited this entire meeting by just voting for number five. But I think the, the input that we received this evening was very, was vitally important to our effort going forward. So I, I would posit, I would, I would motion, if you will, to accept number five and, and hold off on any further consideration this evening or in the near term until we get that study of number one, which is the paid tiered time parking. Number four, recommending paid visitor parking in the downtown area. I would like to continue a discussion on number two, a recommendation of the shuttle from Malanda's, from the Eldridge Garage down to the Fish Pier. I think that would be a useful tool this summer to help alleviate parking congestion at the Chatham Fish Pier and Long Shore Road. I just, I just think it's a no-brainer. So I'd like to continue that discussion. I would also like to continue the discussion on eliminating parking on the north side of Chatham Bars Ave. And even remand it to the, I'm not sure if the track, Traffic Safety Study Committee has considered Chatham Bars in particular, but I would like to hear their recommendation. I'm not sure. I'm just checking. Because I think that does necessitate either their recommendation and/or a public hearing. And I'm not sure, and I apologize. But so I would like to consider those two things. I would like to, I would like to please vote for the, for the study and not to include, and which obviously takes the place of number one and number four. And please recommend the shuttle from Eldridge Garage to the Fish Pier and also a move forward on, on Chatham Bars Ave. Because I think we have, we have a major issue there and I think we really need to consider it. Mr. Castro.
Thanks, I'll be brief. I know Shereen wants to speak. I'm, I'm very much in favor of what you said. And number two is actually in.
That's the one.
In place now.
I know.
And it just needs some formalization.
We're going to talk. I don't mean to interrupt you, Dean, but we're going to talk further about maybe some charge changes.
Right, right, exactly. And as far as number three, that's, that, that one gives, I support your recommendation. We should discuss that. I think we should refer it to the Traffic Safety Committee. They have deferred it because of the parking group.
I have a feeling I know what they're going to say, but I really, I think we need to hear, hear formally back from them. I just believe that. Shereen, Ms. Davis.
I think that's a good solution, Jeff. What I wanted to say is, yeah, the referral of Chatham Bars Avenue to traffic study would be a great way to do it. As far as the fish pier is concerned, I, I really strongly believe that we need to, you know, when we talk about it later, is recommending, you know, highly promoting the shuttle with signage and whatnot at the fish pier to encourage people to do, you know, do just that shuttle over. So I'm, I'm fine with, with your proposal as it stands.
That was a motion. I mean.
I'll take it as a motion. I'll make the motion. Yep.
Thank you.
Just, I just want to make sure I understand. You're proposing we vote on five.
Yes.
That we refer three to the Traffic Safety Committee. And what else? Is that it?
Follow conversation on item two.
On item two, we're going to prefer the conversation. But that's already in place today.
No, that's fine. That, I got it. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. And I think we had a good discussion this evening and I thank you very much. Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Mr. Metters.
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. I just want to, really do want to call out Katie. I know we have further business with you this evening, Katie. You're still on the agenda. But I want to really thank you for your leadership. You did a great job.
Thank you very much.
These are, these are, these are very difficult issues in, in this small town. We just, the paucity of parking is very difficult to figure it out. But hopefully we'll get some help from the commission and others. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Eldridge Garage project update. Director of Community Development, Katie Donovan, as well. I think we have Mr. Kurt Raiber. I saw Kurt online. Kurt, you're here. I saw you. You can run, but you cannot hide. Hello, Kurt. And Katie, why don't you tee this up?
Sure.
Yeah.
Hey, Mike.
Wait one second. Can you guys clear, please? Please clear. Thank you. Go ahead, Katie.
All right. Again, thank you, Katie Donovan, Director of Community Development, here with Kurt Raiber from Catalyst Architects to provide an update on the Eldridge Garage project. As you'll recall, the town purchased the Eldridge Garage property in 2017. The then Board of Selectmen created the Eldridge Garage Property Planning Working Group, which ultimately held a number of meetings and then made recommendations back to the select, to the, to the board for implementation. Town staff has been working with Catalyst Architects along with coastal engineering and Olmsted Design on the implementation of those recommendations. We have received approval from the Historic Business District Commission as well as site plan approval from the planning board. On the screen here now is the most recent rendering. We've had some comments from the neighbors. Once the site plan was approved by the, by the planning board, they had asked for a little bit more robust screening. If you can follow my mouse here. So they had some more robust screening with some different types of trees to eliminate the issues of headlights going into their properties across the street. So that's the only minor change from the site plan that was approved. So again, this is the rendering. As you'll see, we've incorporated some historic elements, historic gas pump. And this item here is actually an air pump for bicycles, but it's actually historical, but it'll be a working air pump. You can see that we've incorporated the bike racks at both ends of the, of the parking area to encourage, you know, bicyclists as well. That was, again, a recommendation of the Eldridge Garage Planning Committee. The building will have two restrooms. And actually, why don't I turn it over to Kurt and let him get into a little bit more of the, the overall design? And I will then also bring up, let me just bring up the site plan.
Thanks.
Super. Mr. Raiber, how are you this evening?
I'm well, thank you, thank you.
You've been patient. Thank you for waiting.
You do have challenges and this, so this will hopefully help.
Yes.
So Katie's going to bring up the site plan. But as you can see in that rendering, we have been working with Jay Olmsted on the planting and we just recently changed in, in the, between the grass area right there, that, that row of hedges and evergreens was just recently made more robust in the conversation that Jay Olmsted had back and forth with the butters across the street. So that's going to be a dense and evergreen hedge row and tree line to prevent headlights from shining across. And so this plan has been altered a little bit since it was before the selectmen last time. We went to planning board, had some comments from them, which included right behind the building, striping a dedicated area for the shuttle to park and to prevent other people from squatting there or parking there. Dedicated space just for the shuttle. And we also added parking bumpers in the gravel to the rear side of the lot. At the upper left corner of the parking lot, there's a pad transformer. Yeah, right there. That's going to be the electric service. There's a pole with the overhead wire on that corner of the property. That'll be a transformer if we need it to, in a meter socket for our building service. At the other end of the site, at the bottom of the page, we're proposing a second transformer location. And that'll be a feeder, which must be a separate service to, to energize the electric charging stations. The town's been working with another consultant, Rivermore Engineering, and then ultimately Weston and Simpson Engineering and Construction, who have been working on grant applications. And I understand that's going well. And they've also are designing that service and will oversee construction of that service. So that's going to kind of be an independent project. But we hope it, it happens content veritably, you know, at the same time with our project. We're, just recently, the building was opened. We're, just recently, the building was opened, and we had Fussin' O'Neill, an engineering company that also specializes in abatement of hazardous materials. They sampled some windows caulking and window glazing compound and some other building, asphaltic building paper underneath some flooring and underneath some siding. So as the building is demolished, that, those materials will be remediated and removed and disposed of properly. We did not find an abundance of lead or other chemical contaminants. So we'll have that testing report back hopefully by the end of this week. But I just wanted to relay the early, the early findings that we've heard about. We will be incorporating the specifications for that abatement in what we're calling bid package number one. And within the next month, we'll let a package that will remove the old building and some of the asphalt paving on the property around the existing structure. And as you probably all know, the town has recently, or within the last nine months, built some new drainage on this site, and that's currently covered in native stone, and that's under that lawn area that's being highlighted with the cursor. So that area is all gravel right now. And what we will do in this bid package number one, the building will be erased and removed. The area where it sits will be backfilled with stone. There's also a very broad, over 60-foot-wide curb cut to the property now. And so we're gonna add some more split rail fence so that there's only a narrow 24-foot in-and-out driveway in the proposed location. And then with those simple improvements, in the spring season, we can open the parking area for, you know, greater amount of parking for this summer season. Simultaneously, my office and some other engineering companies are working on the detailed plans for bidding of the construction of the building. And we will let that package, we're calling bid number two. We propose to let that in the summer and take bids in August and make an award in August so that a contractor could start with the immediate construction of the parking facility, the building, and the landscape right after Labor Day. So we're on track to let those two different packages out, one in the very near term, and one would be let probably the end of June and bid over July, award in, in August. I mean, and construction in September. So we've been working alongside Coastal Engineering on the site plan issues, Jay Olmsted on the landscape issues, including back and forth with the butters. We have the two, the first of the two bid packages that will go out in about a month, and we hope that'll be resolved, or that work will be completed before the end of June, and this will be a very suitable and bigger parking lot for this summer season. That's it in a nutshell.
All right. Questions for Kurt or Katie? Ms. Davis has a question. Kurt, yep.
Hi, Kurt. Thank you. The plan looks really great. I just have a couple of questions on it. When the, you have the driveway and it's, and you have the fence going up to the driveway, or the entrance-
Right.
-area, and you have the walkway around the building. Is there a gateway or opening in front of the building for pedestrians and parkers to walk through there, or do they have to exit through the parking area? I mean, the entrance area?
The fence does not go across the paved area in front of the building. So there's a-
Okay.
-there's a pedestrian opening that's 30 feet wide.
Got it. Thanks. And the other question is, when you mentioned the butters, I know that the, the butters on the roadway were, I had a lot of feedback as to plantings and things like that. I also know that there was the butters in the rear near the meadow. Were they, were they talked to about what kind of plantings and privacy, things that they would, they were looking for, for their property?
You know what? There was a lot of people copied on some emails, but I didn't realize that some of the people were behind. And I don't believe that we reacted to any comments from people that are to the rear of the property, nor do I believe that I was aware that they had concerns or requests, like-
So that might not have been before you were brought on board. When we were doing the Parking Solution Group, the butters in the back had asked that they be informed during the planning process to, to give, allowed to be able to give some feedback about what they thought would be good privacy plantings for their property. And I'll give Katie the, the name, if, if it's not, it's probably in the notes, but it's so long ago that I could see where it might have been missed by nobody's fault. So I'll make sure that I get that to you.
Thank you. I do believe that there is fencing all along-
Okay.
-that area, and I think that that's perhaps why we haven't heard necessarily-
Right.
-from them at this point in time, but I'd be, I'd be happy to reach out to them.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Castro.
Yes, I just want to add to that. I think it was Mrs. Forger on-
It was. I just wanted to-
And I remember speaking with her, and there were a couple of neighbors in the back, so I would certainly encourage proactive outreach to them. I know they had some issues about parking as well.
Thank you, Dean. I, just a couple of questions. Do we still have EV charging stations in the plan?
Yes.
And air for bicycle, I think you, or bike rack and air for bicycle tires?
Yes. The air for the bicycle tires is right in this area here. There's a bike rack here. The EV charging stations, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think we have two Level Two and two Level Three. Is that correct, Kurt?
That is correct. And they are right along that front row of parking as well. To make it, they need to be close in proximity to the transformer that serves them, but-
Right. Super. I thought the plan, at least the rendering looked great. It was, it really looked great. The plan looks great. What do you need from us tonight?
Actually, nothing. This is just an informational. We wanted to provide the board with an update about where we were with the construction.
Mr. Shell has his hand up.
Just two quick questions. One, and I think I'm echoing a little bit of Lane Gibbs' question.
Correct, yeah.
What's the, the estimated time of completion? Sometime in the spring of 2024, and, and then I'll just toss out the other one to be efficient. Are we still completely on board with the donors in terms of their satisfaction and willingness to fund this when it's completed?
Sure. So from the donor's perspective, yes. I think we've, we've actually already received the first of the four payments. And so, again, we will work to reach out to them according to the schedule prescribed in the donation agreement. So that is, you know, that's definitely, that does not seem to be an issue. I think that we're on board with that. And I'm sorry, your first question?
Estimated time of completion.
Oh, sure. I think that we're hoping, our anticipation is that it would be fully complete for the summer 2024 season, but I would defer to Kurt as the project manager.
Yeah. Happy to add two cents there. We're thinking six to seven months from mid-September, which should be, you know, completing about a year from now. The only thing that might linger a little longer is if we had to wait for weather for the final coat of paving or planting of the, some of the shrubs that may not get in the ground in the fall.
Seven months would be April, so right about the same time. Okay. Okay, Katie. Kurt, thank you for being so patient. Looks great, you guys. Looks great.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is Eldridge Garage Service Contract for 2023, and a discussion of some potential fee changes that may dovetail with incentivizing folks to park there. And again, Katie, it's off to you, I guess.
Sure. So, so thank you again, Mr. Chairman. So the, the town has been contracting out for parking, parking management services for the Eldridge Garage property since the summer of 2018, and we have been, we, our contract has been with Chatham Valet Company. Again, the board recommended in 2018 that the parking fee be $15 per day, however, that residents and taxpayers with a valid beach transfer or recycling sticker could actually park for free. So through the comments that we heard, through the Parking Solutions Working Group, we, we've, you know, heard, and through the forums, we did hear some concerns about the fees being too high at the Eldridge Garage Lot, and that, you know, that it's perhaps hindering the amount of people that would actually potentially park there. And so I had reached out to the vendor, to Chatham Valet, to Meladen specifically, to have a conversation about, you know, potential fee changes, if that was something that, you know, that they, that he felt would be not detrimental to the business that, that he's been running there. And so through the conversations with Meladen, he had suggested that perhaps we reduce the initial fee from $15 down to $8 for the first two hours, and then, and then $15 per day. They are seeing a number of people that do park there for the day, and he thought that reducing the fees any more than that would, would be an issue for him to be able to provide the number of staff available to be able to run the shuttles and to, you know, to, to direct the parking, in the parking lot. Again, he, as, as Mr., as Meladen said tonight, he is willing to have a dedicated telephone number that would go directly for people wanting to go or be picked up from the Fish Pier. That is something that he has offered to us. And again, we're just looking to potentially increase the amount of cars that, that may utilize the lot. And so the idea was, you know, if we were to reduce the fees, that that may encourage a greater use of the parking lot. So this is before you for your consideration. As you had set the parking fees in the past, we felt it was appropriate to bring these concerns back to you.
Mr. Metters.
Just a quick, just a one quick question. Who came up with the $8 for two-hour window? So I'm just wondering, because, I mean, someone comes into town, are they gonna be able to do what they want, you know? Is it two-hour, was it two-hour pick for a particular reason, or was it just pulled out of the air?
Actually, it was, it was recommended by Meladen from Chatham Valet, that, that was something that he felt that, you know, from the, the business sense that they could live-
His observations, that it was a good, good window of opportunity for people to come in, do a couple of quick errands, and they could, you know, get out.
That's correct.
That's, that was my question. Thank you.
And just another, they also suggested that we may want to consider monthly subscriptions for businesses if they would like to have-
I think that's a great idea.
-employees, if, if an employer wanted to have a number of spots for employer, employees on a regular basis. Again, based on the way the lot runs, it would have to be on a first come, first served basis. However, you know, you know, employees coming in, you know, certainly for the morning, morning shifts would be, you know, the parking lot is generally fairly empty at that point in time. Again, Meladen is on the call, so any questions?
Mr. Metters, then Mr. Castro.
Just follow up for clarification on that. So, but employee, employees that are town residents would park for free there?
Yes. Yes. Again, that, there's no change to that, is that the residents and taxpayers with a valid sticker would be able to park for free.
Okay, question. Okay. Mr. Castro.
So Katie, so an employer that makes an arrangement for reserved spaces, if the employee is town, a town resident or taxpayer, they park free, would the other, the employee who's not, doesn't fall within those categories, they would pay the $8 or the $15, whatever it is?
Or we could, we could change that fee structure. We could offer something other than that-
Like a discounted-
-for a monthly subscrib-, you know, a monthly subscription-
Arrangement.
-or something along those lines. We could, we could tier it differently, and that, again, if that's something that the, the board is interested in, we could come up with a proposal to bring back to-
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, to be honest with you. Shereen?
Yeah, I agree. I think that we should come up with, you should come up with a recommendation for, with Mohammed?
Aladdin.
Aladdin, about, you know, what that looks like. I think it would be a great thing for, for the business community at a discount, or, you know, because it's being paid upfront with, with whatever. But other than that, I really support what, what's being proposed here, with heavy promotion at the Fish Pier about the shuttle.
There you go. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna add to that. Are we talking about putting some signage up at this Fish Pier?
Yes.
Because that's- Yes. And as, as a matter of fact, once, we would have a conversation, and I think based on the fact that it's, you know, town property, we'll, we'll have to come back for-
Okay. Thanks.
-approval for that.
Mr. 400.
You gotta remember my name.
I'm gonna allow, gonna allow Barry, I remember your name.
Okay. Again, Barry, that's a, the only issue we have at down at 400 is, we have a lot of residents come in, and they don't know about the free parking for residents. There are no, there's no signage there.
Oh, okay.
You know, can we put it in Jill's newsletter? Can we put it in the Chronicle? Can we put a sign?
Super. Thank you. Yep, good.
But also the employee parking process.
Mr. Shell.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm all for that. I'll just add my endorsement to that. I, I, the one thing I'd like to add is, I would like, you know, very active, proactive exploration of the, whatever it is that Chatham Valet, Meladen is offering in the way of shuttles beyond the Fish Pier and the, and the, the beach. I think that's something that we should push as hard as we can.
And then Meladen has his hand up as well. Meladen, I'll recognize you, please.
Good evening. Again, so, yes, just to, you know, like, I, I, I thought about, you know, like, and, you know, like, I wanted to address as many as the concern, as, as many as possible, like, the, the concern of the people in the town. And I, I, I think a lot of the days that the lot is underutilized, honestly. And anything that can bring more business, I'm open to it. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, like, I, I'm adding more shuttles. So if there's a concern that, like, I can't keep up, I'm, I'm probably the only person in town that can keep up. I have eight vehicles now in my, in my feet, so I, I'm pretty sure I can keep up with, you know, with the shuttle service. And I, we thought about it, like, the way, the, the, the way the system is structured now, anything less than eight doors, for me, it's really, I'll be losing money. So like, I, I won't be able to, like, really, you know, because it will bring more business eventually, and then I have to add more staff, and it will be pretty much, you'll be losing venture. So I think most of the people really come for, like, up to two hours in, in the town of Chatham. We have to realize that Main Street is only a mile long, if, you know, even, even not a mile, but that's, that's what it is. You know, like, it's not more things to do to keep people in town. So I think the two hour is, is a fair, you know, fair price, eight doors, the two hours, and then anything after that, it's still the $15, right? That's, that was the, you know, my thought behind it. And as I mentioned, yes, I'm happy to extend the shuttle anywhere in town. We already are, and we advertising it. So, you know, anything that could help that, like, I'm all done for.
Okay. Thank you, Meladen. Mary Kavanaugh has her hand up as well. And, you know, be honest with you, I'm not so sure we need the $2.66 or the $5 either, so I would, I would actually consider waiving the town's cut of that fee, to be honest with you. Mary.
Thanks, everyone.
That would be huge.
I just wanted to say that on the surface, when you first hear, oh, Eldridge Lot, that could be employee parking, when you first think about it, you're like, oh, okay, yeah, maybe that's a good idea. But it's not a good idea if you're a business owner on that end of Main Street, when all your parking spaces for potential shoppers are being taken up by employees. So I think what we need to really think about, and this applies to our parking congestion problem as well, is we need a dedicated spot for our employees to park. We, last year, spoke with Father Sullivan at Holy Redeemer and had something set up, but people didn't take advantage of it. So we need to come up with some type of incentive to get people to go to an employee parking area. Father Sullivan is still open to it again this year, but the problem with that is it's Monday through Friday, and we have people working seven days a week. So I'm not sure that that's the right location, but I would really like to work with the town to maybe come up with another location that could be dedicated to employees to park and have some type of shuttle to get them to their jobs and back to their cars. So that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mary. And- And this is the business part of our agenda, and normally I don't call on folks, but seeing as how it's been very thematic this evening, and very appropriate to have Barry and Mary weigh in on parking, as it's been a theme this evening. Back to the board.
I think the motion that's called for, if any, is that we authorize the change in the fee structure as proposed by Chatham Valet. I don't know what you want to do with your waiver of the town fee. I would certainly support that, so-
I would like to include that.
All right, I will include that in the motion.
In a second.
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. De Castro.
I'm okay with the waiver. Is that going to affect the fee?
Sure. I mean, the board could consider whether or not they wanted to, you know, whether or not they would ask the vendor to reduce the fee, you know, you know, for the first two hours or the first four hours, given the fact that they're going.
No, you do not.
Okay.
You do not want to?
You do not, no. He deserves, you know, we want to, he needs to make a living, and we need, we have-
Okay, I'm just asking.
Okay, so discussion, Mr. Metters?
Okay, so, make sure I'm clear. So if we're going to drop the fee, which I really don't have a problem with it, would, is there any benefit of changing the $8 fee to like a three-hour window? I'm just, because he's not getting, I'm just, now we're trying to process all this really quickly, you know, the numbers and crunching the numbers, but now he doesn't have to pay the fee, he gets a little more breathing room. Is it to his benefit? And I'm just trying to do this quickly in my head. Is that shorter fee for a slightly longer window more business friendly? That's what I'm just trying to do on the top of my head right now. And I don't know if he's on, if I don't know if he's online, does that make any sense from his perspective? If he does not have to pay that $2.66 now, or the $5?
Maladin.
Would, would any, would any adjustments to his proposal make a business sense for him and us as a service to the town?
Maladin?
Yes, the idea about the two hours was because, once you get it more than two hours, then a lot of the beachgoers, which are not there for like the full day, will be opting to do that, and then I will lose the $15, you know, like a regular customer that, you know, we've created over the years. That's, that's my concern, to be honest. And based on our records, the two hour is just about like what usually people, you know, the time, the average time of, like cars that are going to the town, not the beach.
Mr. Chair.
Jill, and then Mr. Schell. Jill, go ahead. And then Mr.-
And we are, we, you know, just, just so you know, like, we're not one of those businesses that would argue for 15 minutes with somebody just because they hover like 15, half an hour. It will still be on at the eight door, you know, if they're within a certain timeframe. You know? That's, that's how, like I imagine it.
Thank you, Maladin. He's done a fabulous job, and the staff is very courteous and very open. I'm just a little concerned if, if we waive the $7,000 to operate the lot, that we receive that amount because we went, we solicited requests for proposals. I mean, if we're not going to charge someone to, I guess, operate the lot, I'm just concerned it's changing the business model for which we went out for bid. And certainly I can remind you, there was an acquisition cost, there's a cost to improve it, but I'm more concerned about the procurement process, that this was a submittal. However you decide to waive the per-vehicle charge, I think that's perfectly within your purview to do so.
But you're suggesting that we shouldn't, we shouldn't waive the-
That's my recommendation.
Okay. Mr. De Castro.
Yeah, I think that was my understanding. We're not, we're not waiving the $7,000. We're just waiving the-
Additional.
Per, yeah, per parking cost additional.
Yeah, yeah.
Does that work?
Thank you. I just want, yes, I just wanted to-
I need to understand that.
So he pays $7,000 rent a year, and then an additional fee for parking?
So we're, yeah, no, we're waiving the five and the two $0.66. That's all I thought. I was recommending, I mean, moving anyway. Okay. Yeah, fine.
Let's vote. All right. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Schell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. De Castro?
Aye.
Chair says aye as well. Thank you, Maladin. Thank you, Katie. Thanks for the input from everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, I believe we have one more item. And we have Megan Downey, I believe, is here this evening, and Jill, to, we're going to consider the ratification of a successor collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Chatham and the Chatham Municipal Employees Association for July 1, 2021 to July, June 30, 2024. And take it away, Jill, and then Megan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you know, we have been involved in negotiations with the Chatham Municipal Employees Association, and it's credit to Megan for her work as the Human Resources Administrator and the negotiating team for the union, that we were able to come up with this memorandum of agreement. So before you, in the package, which Megan can go through, itemizes the tentative agreements for which we would like the board to ratify. A certain component of what is in the memorandum of agreement requires funding at town meeting, and so under Article 15, we would provide a motion. Currently, there's no motion because there's a placeholder. So what we would ask you to do tonight, after Megan's explanation, is if you would approve the ratification and also provide a favorable recommendation for that article, that could be reported at town meeting. So if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to Megan. Thank you.
Megan, please.
Aye, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I just want to provide a summary of the tentative agreements that are listed in the memorandum of understanding between the town and the Chatham Municipal Employees Association. The CMEA, the Chatham Municipal Employees Association ratified the agreement at its meeting on March 20, 2023. As you all are aware, since 2013, all of the town's bargaining units have agreed to the local municipal revenue growth factor in previous CBAs. This is a formula that provides for an annual cost of living based on Chatham's economic performance by certain indicators. The formula for FY 2024 provides for a 3% cost of living increase as it's based on revenue that was received as of October 2022, and cost of living adjustments have been funded and effectuated as that provision carries, even if the CBA is expired. So the summary of the tentative agreements is as follows. The removal of positions of the IT manager and principal planner as positions covered by the bargaining unit. Updated language in the temperature clause to memorialize compensation at time and a half for hours worked by hourly employees performing snow and ice supporter removal or other weather-related cleanups during closure of town offices. The addition of Juneteenth or June 19 to the list of paid holidays. As you know, this day has been granted by the Select Board and the Town Manager as a conditional holiday since 2021, when this day was recognized as a state holiday by the Commonwealth of Mass. Closure of the transfer station annually on Easter Sunday, which is actually this coming Sunday, April 9. Since 2020, the Select Board has granted the closure of the transfer station on Easter, but this would now be memorialized in the CBA as an annual closure. Revision to the list of positions eligible for reimbursement of work boots up to $150 reimbursement per, per year. The previous language in the CBA allowed for positions that were classified as members of the Labor and Maintenance Group to receive reimbursements for boots annually. There are additional positions that will now be eligible due to safety requirements resulting from their site visits or field work. Change to the layoff reduction in force language, amending the notification period from 105 days notice to the association and 60 days notice to the impacted employee, to 60 days notice to both the association and the impacted employee. Following a complete layoff, the town would bear the complete cost of COBRA or continuation of coverage benefits for two months following the date of separation if the employee was enrolled in town-sponsored health insurance at the time of the reduction in force. And a laid-off employee shall be eligible for immediate recall into a vacant position for a period of two years, as long as stipulations that are in place, that are provided for in the CBA are followed during that period. Effectuation of an updated classification and compensation plan, which is the result of a study that was initiated by the Collins Center, and that study was funded through a state-community compact grant. As a result of the implementation, all CMEA bargaining unit members shall receive a wage increase of at least 2% retroactive to January 1 of this year, 2023. A one-time payment of $1,200 to all bargaining unit members to be paid honor before June 1, 2023. And then documentation that our custodial services are outsourced. This work was previously performed by the bargaining unit. The two vacant custodial positions were transferred to the Parks and Grounds Division within the DPW as Parks and Grounds laborers effective July 1, 2022, and the remaining custodial employee was transferred to the Facilities Division within the DPW as a facilities technician effective July 1, 2022.
Well, thank you, Megan, for that summary. Jill? Megan, thank you for that summary. Jill, off to you for the fiscal impact. I don't see Alex on, I don't expect her to be here this evening this late, but if you could just summarize where we are with respect to the money.
So the total fiscal impact for implementing the contract ratification is $221,045. Of that, we've already funded our classification and compensation article in 2022, so we would take $100,000 of that from last year's article, and then we would request to use $71,045 from the tax levy. That would be, again, under Article 15 of the 2023 upcoming town meeting. And then the, the remaining balance would be $50,000, and that would be from free cash. Free cash can only be used for one-time expenses, and with one of the items under agreement for the one-time payment under this contract, we felt it was appropriate to have that $50,000 as an offset from free cash, so as to not impact the tax rate. With that, there may be some adjustment to the capital article, motion of how that's funded using available funds, but not the tax rate. So that's more to come as we get closer to town meeting. We'll have that motion finalized and when Alex gets back. So again, we're looking for $221,045 to be appropriated to fund the salary increases and other cost items resulting from the contract settlement by and between the Town of Chatham and the Chatham Municipal Employees Association. And with that motion, you'd authorize the town accountant to allocate such funds to appropriate, to the appropriate operating budgets. We don't have that funding in the current operating budget, so that's where this town meeting appropriation would be used to transfer into that. And again, raise $71,045 through taxation and $50,000 as a transfer from free cash.
Thank you, Jill. That brings free cash down to $8,867.
Yes.
Okay, that's, we've spent free cash. They can, thank you, Dean. No more slash fund, no more free cash. Anyway, just one brief comment. Megan and Jill, your team has done a great job. Less, less noise than we've heard in many, many, for many, many years. And so, great job. I think it's a, I think it's a great agreement, very good agreement, strong agreement, and I'm fully supportive, so. Entertainer motion, please. Shereen?
I can do it.
Shereen, please, yeah.
I move to ratify the memorandum of agreement for successor collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Chatham Municipal Employees Association effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024.
Second.
Super. Any further discussion? None? Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Schell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. De Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. We have another vote here.
I move to recommend the 2023 Annual Town Meeting Article 15, Collective Bargaining Agreements, as it relates to funding cost items in the successor agreement with the Chatham Municipal Employees Association for July 3, July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024.
Second.
Thank you so much. Okay, discussion, none. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Schell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. De Castro?
I just ask a question before I vote.
Please.
So the Article 15 would contain something like the motion that's drafted here?
Yes, and then further on that, the memorandum of understanding, I'm sorry, memorandum agreement would be signed by me as the town manager, once it's approved at town meeting.
We don't have to approve this form of motion. We don't have to approve the form of motion that you have in there?
Not the form, but just the, the funding amount. Currently, there's a suggested motion that has blanks in it.
Okay.
Posted warrant.
Aye.
Okay, super.
Did you vote?
Chair says aye as well. Okay, that does conclude our agenda and our business agenda this evening. A motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Schell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Good night, Chatham.